I'd like to call the September 11th meeting to order for the Kansas State Board of Education. I'd like to note that all board members are present. I'd also like to take just a moment today. September 11th has become certainly a monumental day in our history and also now known as Patriots' Day. And I think probably most people have either seen yesterday or today on the news or remembrance of it. And I'm sure it's all very vividly in our mind where we were 18 years ago today. I can certainly remember, I was the principal at Coleman Middle School and trying to decide how to tell my teachers and my students. And a day that we'll never forget, and it's important that we never forget. So I think, just to reflect a bit, we also might thank many of our seniors today. They're 18, they were born that year. So, I don't know, I think I'll just ask that we all take, I know we took a moment of silence yesterday, but I think I'll ask that we all take a moment of silence today in recognition of those who lost their life on September 11th and all of our first responders who were so brave and valid in that day. So, take a moment of silence, please. Today, we've got a number of agenda items on today, but first of all, we'll take the opportunity to approve today's agenda. So if there's not any additions or corrections, Janet Waugh moves to approve the agenda for today. Second, Jean Clifford. All in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed? Abstained? 9-0-1. Okay, today, we'd like to welcome a group of folks with us today, and I think Melissa, you're going to start today and introduce the topic and introduce our folks who are coming to share with us today about standards, competency-based instructional and grading practices. So, welcome, we're glad to have you.
Thank you very much. We tried to make the title as hard as possible to say so that you had to really focus when you went through it, so. But, good morning. For those of you that don't know who I am, I'm Melissa Fest. I am the math consultant here at the agency. However, today's topic will not be limited to mathematics. So, some of the board members were joking with me that I was handing them things to read and I was a math person, and so I just wanted to kind of say that up front that this is not limited to mathematics as we go today. So, the first thing that I would like to do is introduce the people that I have the pleasure of presenting with today. Luckily, I don't have to stand up here the entire time in front of you guys, I get to share the airtime with everyone. So, first, I will introduce Dr. Julie Teely. She's from K-State University. She's an assistant professor there in their teacher pre-service program, primarily in the elementary education program, but as we all know, they sort of share responsibilities and collaborate together often. What we're going to be talking about today was the focus of her dissertation and in a topic that she's very knowledgeable in and very passionate about, so it's great to have her here with us. And then we have Luke Hinky. He is from Columbus, USD 493, and he is a high school teacher that participated in the course that Julie's going to be speaking with you about later on today or this morning. And he's going to share some experiences he has. He is also part of a district that's starting redesign this year, so he's going to be able to give some perspective of how this is going to impact them through their process as well. And then we have Christina O'Toole. She's from USD 259 and Wichita School District, and they are going to be, she's going to talk about how they are implementing this in their large district and what it's looking like and the processes that they've gone through to get to that. And then, lastly but not least, is Jolene Goodheart-Petersen from Salina 305, and she's going to talk about how they decided to go into this process and where they are in the USD 305 implementation. And she also was in Dr. Teely's class this summer, so she'll be able to share some perspectives of that as well. So, like I said, they're going to be doing the bulk of the presentation, but I get to kind of do the beginning part here. Our goals for today, first and foremost, are to share with you a partnership model that exists now, it's a school/university/state model, and it's one that has allowed me to do the work that I'm doing within the agency in providing professional learning across the state. Being only one person and the state being as large as it is, there's no way I can be everywhere and do everything all the time, and so this model has allowed me to do that. And we're going to talk a little bit more about it in a little bit. And then, we're going to share with you the components of what we are calling learning-oriented instructional and grading practices, AKA standards-based grading, competency-based grading, standards reference, all of those, you know, ones kind of lumped in together. We're going to talk about the outcomes that this has for teachers and students, and then at the end, sort of share how I'm hoping to extend the partnership that's been created over the last three or four years in this model. So, those are sort of our goals for today. So, first, to talk about the partnership model. If you guys can remember back in 2010, we adopted more rigorous math and ELA science, or math and ELA standards, and then shortly afterwards, the science standards, and they were all much more rigorous. And then, you guys blessed us with your board vision and what it meant to be a successful high school graduate. Those two things combined set the field sort of in a tailspin of like, oh, how do we do all of this and how do we handle everything that's going on around us? And lots of demand from the field for professional learning in all of those areas. And so, out of that, developed this school/university/state partnership and the way to build the capacity to be able to extend the knowledge that we have to help the districts across the state, but not only the district, our pre-service programs. We want our teachers that are exiting K-State to be equipped to handle what we're wanting to take place in the classroom, as opposed to walking into the classroom and then the district having to bring them up to speed, if you will. So, this is how the partnership developed and sort of went over time. The projects that helped lead to this, if you can remember back in the day of the math/science partnership grants that we had, K-State had a number of those, and they, those grants helped to sort of spur this thought of, let's work together. We're all doing the same thing, why don't we work together? And then, you guys are aware of the redesign, or the regional trainings that I've been doing for three or four years now. The universities have helped me develop the trainings that we do, and they actually helped deliver them as well. And so, those all actually go out to your districts that you represent. And then, we have resources that have come out of this, and this has influenced the pre-service program at K-State. As we've had conversations in my math advisory meetings, they have taken that information and implemented it into their classrooms as they're working with pre-service teachers. And not just K-State. Fordham State's been involved, Newman University, Emporia State, just to mention a few. And so, it's been a great pleasure to be able to watch it as have conversations and then it not just be something that's happening in our classrooms, but it's happening in the post-secondary as well. And then, lastly, the learning-oriented grading course sort of evolved out of all of this, and Julie's going to talk a little bit more about that here in a second. But, the development of this course came out of that high demand that I mentioned, and the Math Leaders Advisory Board that I have that meets four times a year started saying, their districts were asking about standards-based grading, standards-reference grading, how can we provide them information about what this looks like? And initially, it started with, what does it look like with mathematics? But as we started having conversations, we're like, it doesn't look different for any content area in terms of how do you go about this process? And so, we presented, Dr. Teely and I presented last year at the annual conference, and we had a packed house, some redesigned schools, some non-redesigned schools, and out of that came a lot of training requests. Hey, come tell us how to do this. Come, come work with us. And so, at the time, I worked with Jay and Tammy in the redesign team and thinking about, how do we create sort of a knowledge base within our consultants at the agency so as they're out and districts ask about it, we're all speaking a common language? So, Dr. Teely and I created sort of a presentation and a training of which they attended, and we got feedback, and that's where the coin phrase "learning-oriented" came from. Before that, we were referring to it as evidence-based grading practices, and after conversations with Sarah, the redesign coordinator, and other folks involved at the time, Brandon Johnson, who was here, we decided learning-oriented represented more what we were wanting districts to focus on. We want it to be about learning in the classrooms, and so that's where we landed on that. And then, out of that, Dr. Teely went back to her dean and the folks and said, hey, I think we should offer this as a graduate-level course in the summer and open it up to people to get graduate credit, and by the way, let's cut the cost. And so, they were able to offer a course this summer where they eliminated tuition costs, and they offered it at a discounted rate for districts to go ahead and register for it, and we had a huge demand. Over 100 people registered within the first two or three days. But there's a number of reasons why we didn't end up with the numbers that we wanted in the course, but we've made some steps to kind of correct that for going forward next year, but I think it's a great model to be able to offer discounted graduate-level courses to our teachers that are out in the field. So, that's the course timeline that sort of developed here. And I'm going to talk just about this first bullet, and then I'm going to hand it over to Dr. Teely, but as I'm sure you're aware, grading is one of the biggest responsibilities a teacher has. It impacts the student's record, especially as they get into high school, and it impacts their future in terms of, are they going, are they going to get scholarships? Are they going to be successful? And the feedback that we give to students in the form of grades, traditionally, when you and I were in the classroom, it was A, B, C, D, F, and oftentimes, we didn't know what that meant. And it varied from one teacher to the next in terms of what that looked like. And so, Julie's going to stand up here, and I call her Julie because we're friends, but it's Dr. Teely. Julie's going to kind of, I'm going to hand it over to her to talk to you for a while about the course and the implementation of it.
So, first off, thank you for having us today. And as Melissa was saying, yes, grading is one of those greatest responsibilities, and it's a huge challenge when we start thinking about, how are we going to do this? Why are we going to do this? However, as you can see, most of the research out there, most of the articles out there say, there's very few teacher education programs that actually talk about how and why to grade. Most of the decisions that teachers make are based on their experiences. So, what happened to me is what I'm going to turn around and do, or whatever good experience I had with grading, I'm going to try that in the classroom. And yes, it all starts there with those experiences that we bring to the table, but really thinking about, how can we be more equitable in those practices and not relying just on our own experiences, but relying on the experiences of other people? So, those key components that, I'm a walker, by the way. I almost walked away, sorry. I'll try to stand here. Some of those key components that were really pivotal, pivotal when we were discussing this idea of learning-oriented instructional practices, and Melissa alluded to this, we didn't want to be so specific that it was just standards-based or just standards-referenced, but really thinking about, the purpose of grading and instruction is learning. We want learning to take place. And so, whatever that means, we, at your district, we want the learning to be at the forefront of that focus. We want that clear communication with all stakeholders. We want everyone on the same page, students, teachers, administrators, parents, guardians, the public, to be aware of what's happening in our classrooms. And we want that communication to be consistent, predetermined policies and practices that we're going to have in place, allowing for those more positive relationships with the public and with parents. And we really focused in on personalized learning. When we start speaking about learning, that is going to be a personalized process. So, what that looks like is the ability to target the individual strengths of our students and those needs, not just in the academic realm, but as Melissa said, in the state board of education vision, we have all of those other kind of non-academic, or as Jolene and I like to call them, co-academic components that we need to be addressing as well. And so, utilizing these key components of learning-oriented practices, we can really personalize both the academics and the non-academics for every student. And that's where the bottom line really comes into play here. It's every student and it's every standard. We're not going to be able to meet the needs of every student and every standard if we don't have clearly articulated standards that teachers have an understanding of and that students understand those. And we do want this to be an equitable practice for every single student that walks through our doors. The biggest way and kind of at the first forefront piece here is the idea of separating those two. So, when we start talking about non-academics or co-academic components, thinking about topics like growth mindset, and we know there are huge growth mindset initiatives in our schools across the state and across the country right now, really focusing in on those intra and interpersonal skills, those cognitive competencies, the SECD standards, employability skills, civic engagement, and being able to target interventions for students if there are specific interventions in those areas, as well as having a firm grasp and understanding of the math, the science, the ELA, the social studies, those content standards. So, how do you do this? How do you transition in this process is really where the course development came into play. And when Melissa and I were talking with districts and getting that demand from them of, come help support us in this process, we know we've scratched the surface, we know there's some inconsistencies happening, help us prepare a better policy, prepare better practices and implement those. And it really revolved around these three steps. So, establishing that purpose. In the course, we talked a lot about change management theory, so the idea of having a clear vision set in place, knowing who your leadership, knowing what your leadership roles are within your district and within your school, and then really thinking about that vision, starting with the why. Why are we, why are we wanting to transition? What is going to be the thing that keeps us moving when things get a little bit tough? The next step is developing those policies then? I'm sorry. Okay. Oh, okay. I thought, so I paused for a second. Sorry. So, then the next step is would be developing those policies that align to those values and constantly going back to that purpose, back to that vision to say, does this policy align with what we're saying? And then, last, which is oftentimes what people want to do first, and I'm looking at the two who are in my course this summer, they really wanted to jump right into those practices and reporting forms, but really, that's the final step, to really have that purpose, have the policy, and then transition and start thinking about, what do the forms look like? What words are we going to put on paper here to have a clear communication plan with those families and with those students? So, this was a quote that was really foundational, and Melissa mentioned that this was the topic of my dissertation. Thomas Guskewski was foundational in that, in thinking about why we, why we grade? Why do we put grades on students? Why do we have this structure within our educational system? And if those practices and policies aren't aligning with what we really envision for school education and what, for learning, for what we want, then reevaluating those and thinking about how we can better define a purpose. So, how you do that is by asking some of these questions. Now, this is not an exhaustive list of questions here, as they will share later. We asked many, many more questions throughout this process, but some of the big ones is just, what do we want our students to learn? And what's nice about being in the state of Kansas is we do have clearly articulated content and social-emotional standards, so we don't have to go far to find those, but being able to understand those, for the teachers to understand and fully, fully see the connections and the relationships between those. And then, thinking about how we want colleagues and how we want students to describe learning. When students walk outside of our schools, how do we want them to feel about learning? How do we want them to go home and talk about learning in general? Not just what happened to me at school today, but how am I learning? How am I getting through this process? And that kind of filters into those other questions of then, how do our practices support those beliefs on learning, both for us as staff and colleagues, as teachers, but also for our students and our parents? So, we have, Jolene is here today from USD 305 to talk a little bit about how they went through this process of defining a purpose.
Thank you. So, as Salina Public Schools embarked on our grading and reporting journey, we found a discrepancy with our intended purpose of grades and our current state of grades. To uncover this disconnect, we asked, we posed these questions to administrators and teachers. Can you think of a time when you received a grade that did not reflect learning? What caused the disconnect between the learning and the grade? And how did it affect your attitude towards the content, the class, the teacher, the school, and so on? As our staff recalled our own experiences or the experiences of our own children, these questions generated some heated conversations. And as they recalled these times when assigned grades did not reflect learning, they uncovered toxic grading practices, unintentional practices with very stark realities. So, we evaluated our purpose. What do we want for children in Salina Public Schools? Why do we give grades? And what do we want grades to reflect? This course really provided an opportunity for me to go back and reflect on that. Where have we been? Where are we now? And what do we want to continue to do moving forward? So, in our spirited conversations in our district, we identified a common factor in most of our inaccurate grade reporting experiences. We found that combining academic and those non-academic factors into one overall grade really often misrepresented learning. Sometimes our reported grades were higher, inflated by student compliance and extra credits, and sometimes our reported grades were lower, masked by zeros, missing work or incomplete work. For so many of us, learning meant compliance of rules rather than a demonstration of understanding in specific content standards. And it's a very sobering moment to, when you realize that you are unintentionally subjecting children to the very same inequitable practices that conjure those feelings of angst and anxiety still today when you are a student. But, out of this experience came a stronger sense of purpose of why we exist as a district. And in Salina Public Schools, our mission is simple. We believe in learning for all, whatever it takes. For USD 305, we decided that grades would reflect learning, knowledge, understanding, content, application, and mastery of standards. But in order to achieve learning for all, we needed a clearer picture of student learning, where a student is now and how to move them forward. We must rethink our traditional grading and reporting practices, and this led us to standard reference grading. You have a handout that is, that's titled USD 305, K-5, it's a brochure or a booklet that as we transitioned to standard reference grading in our K-5 schools, we began to build the capacity of our administrators and teachers. We knew that we were confronting years of tradition, so it was critical to educate our parents about the shift in our grading and reporting practices. Our initial draft was quite elaborate and explained our new grading initiative. The first graph, draft read a little bit like this. Salina Public Schools is implementing standards-reference grading. Here's what it is and how it impacts your student. We are shifting to this new method of grading and reporting because we believe in learning for all, whatever it takes. However, that didn't really match the spirit of the groundwork we had done, and so, we flipped the script. We believe in learning for all, whatever it takes. We believe grading and reporting practices can be improved by the increasing the specificity of what we report. Because we want to have accurate, specific information about your child's progress, Salina Public Schools is introducing a revised report card for grades K-5. This booklet explains why we changed, how the grading impacts your child, and what you can continue to expect from standard reference grading. All the same information, the exact same information, just flipped, which really shifted the lens for our parents. In fact, we had a 95% satisfaction rate from our parents in our community, which I think is amazing. This year marks the fourth year our elementary schools report on academic standards separate from non-academic standards. So, this is then a second handout that you have. This title at the top, 1920 Non-Academic Grading or Standards. This is the second year our secondary schools will report on non-academic skills with everything in the academic gradebook aligned to content standards. And as we continue shifting to grades that communicate and reflect learning, our purpose and our why is at the forefront of our decisions. Salina Public Schools believes in learning for all, whatever it takes. We understand that non-academic skills are critical to character development, post-secondary readiness, and overall school success. We believe developing these essential skills is an important part of a child's education. And in order to clearly communicate progress in these areas, classroom teachers will report on social-emotional learning and work ethic throughout the school year. And you have an example of what we're doing in our elementary classrooms, our middle school classrooms, and our high school classrooms. So, teachers and leaders aligned these non-academic skills, or perhaps co-academic skills, because they absolutely support learning, with our student support initiatives. We calibrated at grade levels, we established continuity from kindergarten to 12th grade. But we found that it's not just enough to report these non-academic factors. We want learning for all students. So, we have a tool that you'll see on the screen where we provide tools to identify the needs of our classroom and our students. So, here you see a yellow, green, and red chart. On that vertically will show you what are our standards that we either are doing really well, or things that we can focus on as a classroom, or you can look horizontally at specific students and see what students need some additional support outside of the classroom, or how can I support those students who are my students? Because we believe in learning for all, we felt like it was important not just to report these, but to have an action or a way to act on them and support our teachers. This is important as we support our students' character development, post-secondary readiness, and overall success. So, as we continue on our standards-grading and reporting journey, our purpose for grading and why we do what we do is the foundation for our future work. When people buy into why you do what you do, the how it looks and what it is really finds less friction in implementation. As we examine our mission, our vision, and why we exist as a district, it's amazing how a shift in our grading and reporting practices really supports our mission for learning for all, whatever it takes.
Thank you, Jolene. And exactly what Jolene was talking about is really setting that stage, making these next two pieces that we're going to talk about with policies and practices, when that gets difficult, when it is, change is hard, and we know that. So, we need to have that clear, that clear vision to really keep our eye right where we want it. So, then, the next process becomes learning policies. So, these, splitting up those academic and non-academic components, but as Jolene mentioned, defining them. What does this mean in our district? Developing those proficiency scales and having those be consistent, and then considering some of the policies, and again, these aren't all the policies that districts have, of course, but considering things like retakes, zeros, extra credit, late work, how are we going to react to that in a consistent way? And then, developing that communication plan, because it's one thing to set in the, you know, in the staff meeting and be developing all of these things, but it's another to then communicate that out to the public, out to those parents, teachers, students, and then get that feedback from them. So, we have Christina here from USD 259 to talk specifically about how they developed these policies and then specifically about their communication plan.
Hello, I'm Christina O'Toole, and I'm honored to be here with you today to share how our district has been also working through these steps. And in our district, we really have spent a lot of time prioritizing our standards. Our work actually began in 2016 when we first started prioritizing our standards for ELA and for math, K-12. And one of the things that we did following that was we began developing our proficiency scales. Now, our proficiency scales in our district are incredibly important to our system, our standards-reference system of instruction and grading, because they clearly identify what the standard is that we want all of our students to know and be able to do by the end of the year, and they also provide a progression of learning for our students so our teachers know where students are in the process when they're learning their standards. So, we did that, and we also use those in the field. We've received a lot of feedback on our prioritized standards and our scales. And through that process, we also spent quite a bit of time looking at our current assessment processes and our curricular resources and tools that we're using to make sure that when we did implement standards-referenced instruction and grading, we would have what we needed and the teachers would be successful. So, like our, like my colleagues alluded to earlier, the reporting tool really is one of the practice pieces where you first have to look at your purpose, your policies, and then start looking at how this is going to look in the classroom. So, while we were working through that process, we also adopted an online electronic reporting tool for our teachers. And we are now, we've gone through this process with ELA, math, and multiple other content areas, so we are ready to move forward. And this year, we are implementing K-5, standards-referenced instruction and grading in the classrooms. We will be implementing in pre-K and in middle school the following year, and then the following year, we plan on beginning our implementation at the high school level. So, when we think about the policies that we need, we adopted as a district four policies that we know will be consistent for all of our elementaries. The first one is a consistent zero-to-four-point grading scale with performance indicators, and you do have a brochure that outlines our scale. So, on the inside is an example of that. We also are doing academic achievement, will be reported separate from behaviors and work habits. Our scores are based on a body of evidence, and extra credit and bonus points for non-academic tasks are not used. Now, these are our policies right now in kinder through fifth grade, and as we implement our standards-referenced instruction in middle school and in high school, we will continue to add policies with that. So, one of the things that we learned during our research and work with other districts that were also going down this path, we learned that one of the most important that were also going down this path, we learned that one of the most important things that we needed to be cognizant of is how do we communicate this change with our parents and community? So we developed a very robust plan for that communication, which actually began in April of last year when we sent home brochures and began talking with parents and explaining this change in a very direct way. And then in this year in August, we've had three parent-community meetings so far. We have one more that we'll be doing the last week of September. We also sent home with our elementary students, parent letters. We sent more brochures, and we have things that we put in newsletters. So we're really trying to, we're trying to reach our community in multiple ways. We also, during the month of October, that is mostly in October is when we have our conferences, so that will be our first time where parents will be really getting into this. So we have a hotline that we've set up that will be having parents, and anyone can call in Tuesdays through Thursdays. So we're excited about that. And along the bottom of that slide, those are just, those are examples of the different things that we have provided at the school level, some tools to help teachers and administrators talk with their families. And at all of our community sessions, they got one of these folders. So we're really working hard on that, and it's gone really well. And so we look forward to sharing how things go for the rest of it. Thank you.
So that clear communication becomes so pivotal, because if information is going home, I mean, that's the purpose, or one of the purposes of those reporting forms, is to share that information. So making sure that parents understand what they're looking at and how they can reach out to the district if they have questions, and really be supportive of this process. It is going to feel and look different. And so I think being really clear with parents upfront will pay off, will pay off really well for them. The last, and I don't mean last as in this is a three-step process, because there's many nuances, I'm sure you know, to any of this, but the last kind of big key piece is then aligning those practices. So once we have policies in place, making sure that what we're doing in the day-to-day is aligning with what we said we were going to do in that policy, which then aligns with that vision. So it's always tied back to, there's that nice little thread right to our vision and why we are here as educators. And to align those practices, we really talk about identifying clear standards, both content and social-emotional, developing the reporting form, thinking about what that reporting form that's going home is going to look like, and then resources that we're going to have for students in the classroom to guide that learning. Because with the title of this, you notice that this is not just grading practices, but these are instructional practices. When we make these reporting shifts in reporting, we're also going to be changing and thinking about what that and how that impacts the instruction in our classroom. And then that last piece of then creating that feedback loop, and you heard a little bit about that from the Wichita schools, but then thinking also about internally, how are you creating a feedback loop for your teachers and for your students? So we have Luke here with us today from USD 493 to talk about how he is starting this transitioning process of grading practices in his classroom.
Good morning. When I first mentioned this to our principal, Dan Grundy, I will say that he was not a fan. He had heard some things about standards-based grading and how it had impacted some school districts negatively. And so the one thing that he expressed to me was he wants students to have feedback. And he recognized that our current grade system does not quite allow for the feedback that he would like our students to have. So with that in mind, I really took to heart all that he had said in during that conversation as I began Dr. Tilly's course. To begin, I had to first look at how our students are assessed. And so I consulted with the Kansas Math Standards, as I'm a math teacher. And as I was looking at the state assessments, Melissa has been so kind to put together the focus document, where 70% of the math standards are focused on our state assessment. I figured that'd be a great place to start. I mean, if our students can be held accountable to mastering certain competencies, then surely they can do decent on the state assessments. So these are the 10 focus standards that we start off with mathematics. Now, after I had these standards all laid out, I set up rubrics for each one. I borrowed this rubric setup from Shanoot. Shanoot had gone through a similar process, looking at standards-based grading, competency-based learning. They wanted to avoid the word standards. And so as they were going through it, they had it set up in this similar fashion. At the top, we have the Kansas Mass Standard, and so it's all oriented around there. And then we have our student outcomes for the unit. And then from there, we can break it down into the outcomes for each lesson or each lesson segment, so we have our lesson objectives. And then finally, we have a way for students to show their exemplar understanding of material, and that's what the fourth rubric column is for, where they have DOK III and IV extensions. And so students can show their mastery by tutoring or helping other people, really show some understanding when you can teach it. And then going into above and beyond. So I looked at what standards were related to it. I didn't necessarily go all the way up to those standards in the upper grade levels, but some intermediary steps. And then the students have this directly in Google Classroom. So when I set it up in Power School, this is going to be linked, so parents have instant communication with that, and they can see where their students are at and then kind of evaluate their own child's progress. And then our students are able to go in and kind of do a self-assessment before we test and then after we test. Then after they test, then they do a kind of another opportunity to look and say, hey, how can I improve my score? And so then they can kind of work with me, do a reassessment piece, and say, a contract that will allow us to have that conversation, well, how do you want to be reassessed? Like, is this something we can just talk about and clear up any miscommunications and demonstrate your learning and understanding? So also, what was interesting here was throughout our course, the 50%, starting off there at that as the ground level instead of zero, you have to overcome such a huge gap of 60% of a grade just to get finally out of D. So that was interesting to read the research. And so, and then also the fact that the A becomes more valuable in a process like this. Students actually have something to work for and to achieve. So it's not just a free ride for all students. So as I was discussing this process that I had gone through in the course with our principal, he became less of a skeptic and more of a casual supporter, and gave me permission to go ahead and begin to start to implement some of these things in our school district, or within my classroom specifically. And as I worked to onboard my students with a presentation I built within the course and during the class, I've also started to implement some of these practices. And then finally, I am hoping to initiate a conversation with our staff as we begin our redesign process. We've just started, so we're still establishing our why, as to why we're doing redesign. And as we work through that and begin to test things out, I hope to share this initial presentation about what happened to E. Like, where are grading, where is E? So it's something that we all kind of have wondered back in our mind, and so, but it's arbitrary. And so eliminating that arbitrary nature from our grading practices is what the goal of this is, and making it perfectly observable to both the community, our community stakeholders, and our students, and our, anyone that we're working with. Then we also have a quiz that I built into it to kind of demonstrate, hey, if a student just gives me Kleenexes, okay, great, you get an A. Sometimes that's actually how our grades are set up. If you do enough extra credit, that extra credit's not always aligned to academic knowledge. So focusing on that. And once we've provided this onboard, and we hope to move to where our staff develops a common process across all of our subjects to communicate student achievement of the Kansas content standards, and that's where it's focused on. Thank you.
So we've listened and heard about the purpose, establishing that why, why are we doing this? Why do we need to look at what we're doing in our classrooms, both grading and instructionally? And then the policy formation process that needs to take place? And then lastly, Luke shared sort of what does this look like in terms of a reporting form? The reason this is all important is I've been working with districts that have implemented it in their classrooms and skipped some of those steps and jumped right into, let's just create a reporting form and start going into it. They've experienced a lot of struggles. Some of the struggles are from parents not understanding and sort of some pushback because they just don't have an understanding, or from staff not truly understanding or buying into why we've done what we've done. When you've heard these folks talking, it wasn't just the leadership team at the district standing there in a closed room conspiring of what this is going to look like. These were, as Jolene called them, spirited conversations between colleagues from staff and parents and administration. And without those conversations, I think Jolene would agree, that their district would have struggled immensely more than it already has. Regardless of whether you followed all the steps correctly or not, there's going to be growing pains through this process. But that is why you establish that purpose, because as growing pains happen, if you can go back to the purpose, who can argue with, we want our students to learn? Who can argue with the fact that our goal as educators should be that they learn? Not to punish them because they didn't know the content on October 13th when I did the test, but more to look at, how can I help them know that content by the time they leave my classroom? And so while, as Julie said, this was not the exhaustive list of steps that needed to take place, I think it is important to highlight that skipping a step could cause further growing pains and might completely take the wheels out from underneath your bus, if you will, and stop it dead in its tracks. So I think it's important to kind of just reflect on that and to think about why we do those sorts of things. Sometimes in education, we want to rush to something. We want to like, we want the results now, or we want them yesterday, or we want to get there tomorrow because we had this great idea today. And in fact, good things come to those who wait and who plan and have informed information from their staff. And what I mean by that is having a conversation with your staff and your parents about what is it that we want for our students, and what does success mean for us in our district? Each district is going to have a different idea or different components of those co-academic concepts that they want to focus on, and how do we highlight those in our grading practice? So what does all this mean for students? We've talked a lot about how it looks for staff and all of that stuff, so let's just talk about grading orientation versus learning orientation. If I was to ask any one of you if you had ever taken a class in college where you received a grade, let's say you got a low grade, but you learned a ton in that class. For me, it was chemistry. Okay? I didn't get a very high grade, but I will tell you, I learned an immense amount of information in that class. I left going, wow, I had no clue about these particular concepts. Okay? And then there were classes that I got As in, that I was like, really? What did I just learn? And that was in college, right? And I believe that I want students to really walk away from any course, any content area going, wow, that was impactful to me. I learned something about myself, I learned something about the content, and how can that benefit me outside the walls of my classroom? That's the difference between learning orientation and learning orientation. Learning orientation is about struggle, about making mistakes, and not always being right there perfect in that letter grade. The A, as Luke said, when I'm finished and I have that A, I know what I've learned. Right now, when I have an A, I may have just brought a lot of Kleenex boxes to class. And that's a pretty profound statement if you think about that. And we know that that happens, and it was unintended. There was not any intention for harm to happen, but when a student can achieve a letter grade, that impacts their college education, right? Simply because they have the ability to go buy a bunch of Kleenex boxes, equity is a huge issue. So some of the things that come out of this for students is learning anxiety, which was formerly as commonplace. Everybody has it. Math anxiety, as you guys know, is a very, very common thing that takes place. And a lot of times, I think that is because of the grade, because of that emphasis, I've got to know it now, and this inability to think that I can learn it. And so this helps lead to higher levels of motivation for students. If they, as Luke is creating those contracts with students about, how do I want to show that I've learned this information that currently I don't know as well as I should? That actually gives a student some buy-in to their learning. Why not give them that buy-ins? It is their life that we are impacting, right? And then secondly, when students are given scores that tell them they're ranked below other students, then it creates a different sort of environment than if we put it to where it's about your individualized, your personalized learning and where you're wanting to get in life. They never are able to learn if you make it a competitive model where I'm trying to compete with my peer, and, oh, I got an 88, and she got an 89, she must be smarter than me, sort of concept. And then some other outcomes for students is assignments add up and relate to the overall learning. I can identify, if I look at what Jolene shared with us, as she said that she had the standards listed vertically, and then across the board, I could look at the students. If you can kind of remember, I looked, and a couple of the students was green all the way across the board, and then some of the students was red, blank, maybe they weren't there, and then green. It allows me to personalize that learning and give that student that individualized feedback that they so want. And if I'm a student that had some reds, but I had some greens, those green areas give me hope. It gives me a sense of, okay, it's not that I don't know anything, it's that I need to really hone in on these particular concepts. And it shifts the control, which will be hard for teachers, especially at the secondary level, and I can say that because I spend a lot of my time there. The control is less from me, and it's more in the hands of the student. What you want to learn, you become control in how much you want to put into your learning, as opposed to the teacher being in complete control of that. So those are some outcomes for students. It's not an exhaustive list, just sort of a few of them to sort of think about. And again, from that grading orientation, learning-oriented perspective. For teachers, teachers focus on learning rather than grades. An example, less time grading in isolation, more time giving feedback, helping students understand what it is they do and do not have understanding of. Rethinking our practices, I-do, we-do, you-do sort of things. And then shifting from telling to asking questions. Instead of me being the all-powerful Oz up in front of them on the board, giving them all the information, shifting the conversation to, tell me what you know. What do you understand? How can this impact you? How do you think this information relates to what you're doing? And asking questions in such a way that students discover the information as opposed to me spoon-feeding them the information. And as they discover it, if they discover the information and learn it on their own, the retention and the conceptual understanding take place. If I spoon-feed it to them, it tastes good at the time, but once they've digested it, it's gone. Okay? And then lastly, shifts the responsibility for the student's success from the teacher to the student, so more time on the content versus assignment completion. We're focusing on the content as opposed to giving them 50 problems to do at night. Maybe I'm giving them one rich problem to dive into and have conversations about that provides meaning and relevancy to their life. So that's sort of the nutshell of the course content, and there was a lot more to it, and sort of the implementation processes districts are shifting. I've worked with some small districts, Stockton, for example, a really small district that we've been working with. Jolene and I actually went out and presented with them on this topic. To larger districts, as Wichita are considering this. Some are redesigned districts, some are not redesigned districts. But I think the conversation is actually really about, how do we shift it from being this grading-oriented classroom to a learning-oriented classroom? And how do we take this partnership model that we discussed this morning to all content areas? Because while Luke shared about mathematics, what Jolene had up there was not limited to mathematics. It was all content. What Christina talked about at Wichita is they're not just doing it in their math elementary classrooms, they're doing it in all of their content areas. And so as I mentioned earlier, Dr. Tilly and I are going to continue to collaborate, and based on demands from the field from redesign and non-redesign, we're going to try to help develop more graduate-level courses that help meet this need. One of the handouts that you have, I forgot to mention this morning, earlier, is a research article, or an article that had been published. Dr. Tilly and Dr. Martini from K-State took this model, this school/university state model, and they wrote an article about it, and included districts that this is impacted. And you can look through that, those are all Kansas folks, so you're going to see all kinds of Kansas district, and it was published this month in the article there. So I thought, you don't have to read it now, but if you're interested, you can kind of see a little bit more details about the model and how it extends what we're doing here in Kansas. It's the first of its kind. So first of our kind district, or state, doing redesign and jumping on it, first of our kind having social-emotional standards, first of our kind looking at how do we help our teachers, both pre-service and otherwise. And I think that this will be very impactful, not just in mathematics, but in all the content areas that we have. So hopefully, we've accomplished the goals that we said that we would. We're a little ahead of time, so I guess that gives you more time for questions. I should have talked longer, I guess. But any questions that you guys may have about anything, it doesn't have to be me answering, so if you have a specific question for one of the educators that are here, they're more than willing to answer them. So just open it up to you.
Thank you. Thanks to everybody who came today, and we do have a number of questions. You know, when I kind of reflect back over standards, it seems like we're on the third or fourth rendition of standards. Would that be about right?
More than that.
More than that?
If we go back to the 80s.
Yeah, but kind of in the 80s. But yeah, and I think, you know, Melissa, when you started, you said, you know, as far as the more rigorous standards. And as I was always kind of thinking about standards and how we're progressing, it seemed to make sense to me that we begin to get into grading practices, because our learning should be standards-focused instead of textbook-focused, which is a huge transition for a lot of our folks. You guys are probably seeing that some yourselves, I would guess. So this is a good, I see this as a good thing. Are there going to be bumps along the way? Sure. So I like your description of the process, and then the policies, and then the practice. I think that's good, because people do have to understand why. You know, sometimes our folks most reluctant to change are our own people, but then involving the parents. So I was glad to hear about what you're doing, and I'm sure that will continue to be things you'll be working on, because communication is key, because it's different. And you know, everybody went to school, so everybody's an expert. And you know, everybody went to school, so everybody's an expert. So it's something, when something gets a little different, you really have to look at it and make sure you're communicating rationale why. So I appreciate the presentation today, and like I say, we do have a number of questions, so we'll get started on those. Steve Roberts, start with Steve.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Did we ever decide one way or the other whether a trapezoid has at least one pair of parallel sides or exactly one pair of parallel sides?
Yes.
Which way did we go?
Both.
Well, that's, yeah. That's what I remember. I instituted a grading practice, I've taught a lot of different places, based on what my, one of my professors did. It was a great grading system. I'd like to sit down with you and show you how incredibly simple and straightforward it is and how it can align with your objectives. I'm concerned that a lot of what we do around here is geared toward making sure that people who have gone to teachers' college keep their jobs. I really think that's what drives a lot of this. But as we involve parents and as we involve the community, I think we can make things simpler and more effective, I really do. I also want to point out that as Kathy says, everybody even went to school and everybody's an expert. But I have to say that, when I say that you don't necessarily have to go to teachers' college, the public's with me on this. And I don't mean overwhelmingly like four to one, 80/20. I mean like 98 to two or 99 to one. So I'll, I hope to be leveraging that so that we can truly have schools that work well for all socioeconomic strata. Because right now, it's hard to deliver for our poor kids. It's hard to get teachers in there to do the right job. It's hard to get quality teachers in hardscrabble districts. We need better incentives. We need higher teacher pay, but we need to change the way we invite the public into our schools. We need to welcome professionals to teach certain technical subjects at a secondary level. There's a lot of things we need to do. And what I would like to do is work with you on a grading system that can be shared across all subjects in a very, just an incredibly straightforward manner. So I would love to have some time with you, probably spend an hour together, and I think you'll see what I mean.
I would welcome the conversation. I'm always open to any ideas or thoughts that you have on how we can better serve our students and reach the demands of the future. We know that the jobs that our students are going to do haven't even been invented. So we're fooling ourselves to pretend that we have all the answers, and so I would be more than willing to have that conversation with you, as would anybody that's here, I think. Speaking for you, so hopefully they're going to nod their heads and not go, no, not me. So, absolutely. Thank you, Steve.
Deana Horst?
This is for Jim, but I'd like to, when he's finished, I have a question.
So we'll start with Jim and then we'll go to Deana.
Thank you, Deana.
Yeah.
Appreciate that. Nice presentation.
Thank you.
First of all, I'm going to tell you that I have probably had to deal more with this subject in the last several weeks, maybe month and a half, since it's really hit the press. You guys haven't scratched the surface of what you're going to change. Right now, that was a nice presentation in a graduate class, it's not going to fly with granddad.
Pardon, can you repeat that?
Man, I've got more grandparents, I think this is so full of baloney that, you know, you're changing culture, okay? You're going to, you know, and I don't want to demean your, your presentation, it was very good. You guys are into this. But boy, I'll tell you, I'm just giving, I'm putting the flag up. I love it, and I'll defend it, but I will say this, we're going to get scarred on this one, because you're not reaching the public. You know, you might think you're putting out a brochure, or you're having a community meeting, pat yourself on the back, went well, you didn't deal with the people you're fighting with. You know, now, the second part of this is, you have other stakeholders that you haven't even, I don't think you even, the Activities Association. Okay? You know, I mean, I hate to say that because I've been fighting them on years on this, but there's a whole lot of other things. Colleges, okay? Give me an A, turn it in, give me that 87, turn it into a B, turn it into a three, give me a 3.2 grade point average, everybody's happy. We've been living with that forever. I would love to go to this, but I'm just, a fair warning, you know, I'm sure Columbus got it when he went across, but remember, when he came back, they arrested him.
Yeah.
Okay? I'm just telling you, this is culture. This is, this is 250 years of culture, and you're putting me a pamphlet out. Okay? This is just starting. Now, I'm all for it. Go forth, and when they arrest you when you get back, okay? I will be there to say they shouldn't have done it. And that's arrest you. Because this is great. I mean, I have, I have sat at places with people, and this is really grabbing, so it's my fair warning, it's really grabbing people in the business community, and grandparents, and, and teachers, that think this is a bunch of malarkey. It's just, it's the new math all over again. And by the way, they love redesign. They love all that stuff. They want to change everything, and, you know, but I'm just fair warning, you know, I'd love to do this. This is great. I agree that, now, you overdid it with the Kleenexes. Nobody's gotten an A for a Kleenex. Okay? Now, wait, wait, just, no, 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 see? Stay with me. Wait a minute, I've been doing this for 39 years. Somebody might pop to an A.
Right.
Okay?
Right.
But I'm going to tell you, if, if, there's a different issue if a teacher's doing that. But then again, you know, that's leverage to get Kleenexes, it's saving money. I mean, you know, there's a, there's a benefit ratio here. But we overdo it, and grades are misrepresented. Okay? I know that, my personal life, my kid's life, my, my professional life. Yeah, what I'm saying is, we've been willing to live with that within our culture. We take that because it's a, it's a language that we all understand, from California to New York to Rhode Island to Kansas. An A's an A. Nobody knows what the hell it is, but it's an A, you know? So, you know, I guess I would encourage you, as you start this journey, whether you're a teacher in one school or a Wichita Public Schools, man, you've got to inspire people. You haven't given me a reason today why I, as a grandparent, who think the schools are crazy anyway and wasting my money, are going to buy into this. And I, and you're getting this from a person who wants you to win.
So I, I'm just going to say two points to what you said, and then I'll look to these folks if they want to add any.
Where's my Kleenex? I'll leave you alone if you give me Kleenex.
I don't have any Kleenex.
I think, did, did you bring a Snickers? I think Jim needs a Snickers.
I'm sure that the guy that appeared must have something. There's, there's two points I want to make, and then I want to look to these folks if they want to add to it. But a couple of things to say.
Yeah, yell at me.
I totally, totally agree.
I'd rather be yelled at you than by the crazy people I have to listen to.
So, so being the math consultant, and you know, you mentioned the crazy math stuff, I've dealt with the crazy pushback that we've had, but there's two things, two points that I want to make to what you said. One, when you mentioned universities, and we didn't share this because we only had a limited amount of time with you, but Purdue University, we all know Purdue University, pretty prestigious university. If you look at their engineering programs, one of the top in the country. They have recently shifted and switched to standards-based grading. They went out and talked to, just giving you some information, went out and talked to the firms that hire, the companies that hire their engineers. What do you want to see? What is it that you want us to be looking for? And now they're reporting things like, does the student play nicely with others? Do they come to class? Are they dressed professionally, along with the academic content that's taking place? And they're having a great amount of success. And as they're having success, what do you think their competitors are going to do? Wait a minute, they're taking our students. And so I do think that this is a movement, and the shifting of the culture, the shifting of the mindset is, is something that any time change takes place. Real change, hard change, the change that's really worth it takes time, and it takes growing pains. But if we ultimately stick to our guns, if you don't know me very well, some of you know me better than others, I'm a very stubborn individual. I will sit and argue with Dr. Watson in the room, knowing that he has full control of my livelihood. I...
I'm going to call you when I'm in one of my sessions with very enlightened people. You know, no, I understand.
We have control of the Randy's.
Oh, okay.
No, you're getting this from an advocate.
Absolutely.
I mean, I am not here, I think this is great. Grading has been just a horrible experience, you know? It doesn't tell the story. And I, and I have fought teachers and, and folks on the Kleenex, you know, and that, I realize that's a symbol of other issues, you know? I'm all, I'm all for it. What I'm trying to say is, you're changing culture, okay? You know, and there's a lot of parts to this. Don't be satisfied with what you've done, okay? And I, I, I got, there are teachers who are going to have to do this, that haven't bought into it. And if the teachers aren't going to buy into it, they're not going to, it's not going to happen. If grandpa doesn't buy into it, the business community, yeah, Purdue might have done it, I can show you success stories, and your classroom's a success story, you know? And I can show you different communities are success stories. This is bigger than all of that. It's a cultural change of how we connect and communicate what's going on in schools, you know, to parents, to the, our prime customer, you know, and to society. And I just, you got to, you're just starting the fight. Hope you don't get arrested.
I agree, we're stretching the surface, and by no means are we done.
Go for it, I'm all for you.
You don't know the people that are sitting here, but I know them quite well, and as stubborn as I am, some of them are more stubborn than I am. So we are going to, we're going to do this fight.
Just remember, what, what was it Covey said about culture? Culture each change all the time, or whatever, you know? Yeah, good luck, you know? Because the person who's going to win this is probably not going to be here.
Absolutely.
You know, and we, you know, Columbus is liked and hated at different times in history, so you'll be liked or hated in different times of history. Undone.
And I think we have to remember, we set this vision, and we've asked for change. And is it going to be rough? Yes. Communication is absolutely key. That is key for all of our publics. So I mean, it's a very good point, and we have to be very diligent with communication with all of our publics, including us. So it will be a challenge, there's no doubt, so, you know, I think our folks that are kind of out here on the bleeding edge, we appreciate that, but we know it's going to, we know it's going to be tough. Let's go to Deana.
Okay, and I will tell you the, my name being on there the second time is for Michelle. So I get to be the, I'm the only one in the neighborhood whose computer is working.
This whole end is like hand waving, we need, we need tier three in hand waving over here. Okay, Michelle, you're up. Oh, no, Deana, you do have a question.
I'm going to ask first.
Okay, gotcha.
And I guess some of what Jim said was some of what my concern was, but I think that the communication component is going to be the key. And if parents and kids are happy, probably the grandparents aren't going to be nearly as concerned being one of those grandparents. So my, as an art teacher, one of my thoughts when I saw some, in fact, I think it was Wichita, the very first thing up there was art and things that, that you hope that they're going to learn during that year. And I appreciate that very much. I think oftentimes, we who teach in subjects that are kind of, particularly on the elementary level, that are the ones that teachers say, I get a break now from, you know, were looked at as more the break rather than the education component. And I would just urge everybody to make sure that those subjects are included also, because there are things that kids learn in, in art and music that, and in PE, that benefit what you are doing in math and, and language arts, et cetera. So I just urge you not to leave out those components, because when you're doing these kinds of things, because it brings them up to the level that they need to be in the minds of everyone. And I, toward the end of my teaching career, used a lot of rubrics, and it makes a lot of difference with what kids understand their grades mean. So thank you for kind of expanding that to everything. And we do have standards, by the way, in music and, and art and, and in PE, and so we need to make sure parents know those are being taught also.
Absolutely, I agree wholeheartedly, and that's why we're, the whole CSES team is looking at this concept together, and, and as, as we present, and we've been sharing, we mention all content. So I agree wholeheartedly.
In fact, art teachers, I can't speak for music because I never taught that subject, but I know art teachers have always had portfolios and have always had kind of a session when we went through everybody's artwork and we talked about what, how this student had met what we'd asked for and, or had gone beyond. And so those kinds of things is, that's what I see occurring here with, with other coursework. And I think you finally caught up with us.
I was going to say, we're finally, we're finally reaching the, the model standards and what you guys have been doing. The portfolios that you do in, in, in art and in music, and the way that you approach that feedback with students, is exactly the kinds of things that have been missing in our other areas, and so trying to figure out, how does that look in math, or how does that look in science, or ELA, or history, social studies, government, those sorts of things? I agree wholeheartedly.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Going to go with Michelle, and then we'll come over to Jim Porter.
Thank you. This is, this is great. I mean, I love, I love it. I loved what I heard today about, I think it was 10 days ago, I had parents within like 48 hours in the neighborhood, I stopped at a restaurant, they're like, what is going on with our school's new grading system? And I said, what are you talking about? I mean, these are, these are, this is a school where my children went to school, and I said, I'm not sure what you're talking about. And, well, they didn't give us why. They didn't, they didn't start out with why. They didn't, they weren't really sure when they were talking to us, what they were talking about. And all the parents were like, looking at them like, what are we doing? Why are we changing? What's going on? And so I called the, you know, principal just so I could get an update on that, and then they were going to have the curriculum person call me the next week, just because I said, I don't really know, you know, I'll find out, I'll get an answer, because they wanted to know. And I thought that's the biggest thing, is communication, is if you're going to change something that drastic, the first thing that those parents should have been told probably is, why? Why are we, why are we doing this? And this is why we're doing this? And we feel, you know, just explain it like you did today. I think what, it took about 30, I don't know how long, about 35 minutes. I'm not sure how much time it might have been limited, but I think the biggest thing is if they're going to move forward, is make sure everyone knows they're on the same page, and they're on the, they're making sure that they know why they're changing that. Because I think it was a 1, 2, 3 grading scale maybe, instead of 1, 2, 3, 4. But, but after I heard a little bit of the reimagine Louisville thing, I heard a little bit more about it, and now I'm hearing more today. I think if it's explained, I think like you said, people will, the parents will be on board, the kids will understand it better, and, and it'll be, it'll, a little more smooth transition, and I think it'll be successful.
Yeah, and the only piece that I would add is that, what I heard you say was that, you know, parents need to be told, I would argue, they need to be included in that establishing of the why, the way the districts here have done it. If we don't include them in the initial reason as to why, why would they buy into our why? You know? But if they are a part of that conversation, then when they are sitting there at the basketball game and a parent next to them goes, what's this crazy stuff that's taking place? They can say, well, I was on the board, or I was this, and we had this conversation, and they can have that spirited conversation of, of excitement that took place. So while we will always be telling some, because not every single person's going to be involved in the conversation, it is critical that we include them in those initial conversations and in the and in the feedback loop. As we roll out this reporting process, maybe the first semester, first quarter, get feedback from parents. What did, what doesn't make sense? What tweaks do we need to make to make this make sense for you and your student? And to always be open to that, we, we can't be so rigid in our thinking and that we have all the answers. So, I think that's, and it's a humbling thing because it's a different, it is a change in culture, not just for the parents, but for us in education as well. And so, I think, I, I agree with what you said too.
I think that's what we're doing for the older kids. I think they're, they're including the community on that. It was the younger, it was up through fifth grade and it was like, it just kinda happened, I think. Maybe it didn't just happen, but it sounds like it did because the parents were all, within like 48 hours, I had people all over me, I'm like, I'm at the state level, but I will find out, I will find out what's going on locally, you know, because my kids were a little older and that hasn't affected them yet. This, we're talking elementary school, so.
When we were creating this presentation, Dr. Tealy and I said it was the hardest one that we ever created because we're trying to condense everything into a little bit. There's a short video that I would have loved to share with you that Joe Bowler recorded of some elementary students. And basically, the question was, what is, what does the classroom look like to you and what does learning look? And the, and the student described it as a prison. It's prison. What does 1.1 look like? What is 1.2? It's the same thing, time and time again, I might as well be in prison. And to hear those students talk about it, I wanted to start the conversation with that video, but it would have eaten into our time. But the reason is those kids, those kiddos need to be involved in the conversation. Teachers and parents need to hear that they feel like it's a prison and how can we make it feel like less of a prison in providing a learning environment? So, I, sorry, I had to share that.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Thanks, thanks for everything today.
Thanks, Michelle. Jim Porter.
Well, I'm gonna shift gears. This is not what I intended to say first, but I, I hate to say this publicly, I agree with Jim. And that is, there is gonna be pushback and I would think that the pushback is gonna come probably for those people that are being very successful in what we're doing. I'm very excited about this. I've been concerned with grades and what they meant forever. And this is very exciting to me. Ever at high school, if I'm a high school teacher, at some point around the 18th of December, I've gotta turn in a grade because K-State's not gonna enroll me without that. And sometime around May the 20th or May the 18th, I've gotta turn in another grade. Now, I would like to see us take a step further. And that is, if you have 20 kids in your class, they're gonna be at different places on the 18th of December. Some of those may have, have developed competency in those standards on November the 18th. And some of them, if they had the chance, may develop those competencies on February the 18th. I would like to see us go a step further and issue credit whenever competencies are earned, not on the 18th of December or the 18th of May. And I would hope that we can continue that. I mean, I, what I'm saying is, I think this is great, I'd like to go further.
And I think one of the things that you brought up in terms of, they have to have a letter grade, that conversation is shifting as well, the, the conversation at the post-secondary world. And there are a lot of universities across the country that are not requiring a GPA. They are, they are literally taking the, the reporting system that has been developed by the district that gives feedback on the standards-based, reverenced, whatever you wanna call it, practices and taking that into consideration along with, you know, other practices or other, other measures, I guess, if you will. I agree, the idea of not giving a zero. I'll share Dr. Tealy's personal example, when she was teaching in Iowa, a student hadn't completed their work and she could have given them a zero, they were an eighth grade student, right? And I may misrepresent the story, but she could have given them a zero. And instead, what she did is she went to her counselor and she said, I don't wanna let this student off the hook. I want them to complete and be able to show what they're doing. Can we at the beginning of the school year finish this work before they start the next? And the counselor's like, yeah, we can enter the grade later. And so, she worked with that student and his report grade or report didn't come out until August or later on, even though May was when the grades were due. So, I agree that this is a conversation and, and again, that's gonna be a big culture shift, but I do, I do think that that is something that's in the, in the conversations and are taking place as well. So, I appreciate you bringing that point.
And I've always been concerned about that student that made 55% in English, ninth grade English. And why they had to sit in that class again whenever they need to get six more points instead of, you know, building those up and taking English 1 and then English 2 at the same time and then dropping out as a junior because they hate English. Let's figure out a way to give them the time to get where they need to be. And that's not, that, that, that's expanding your subject, but significantly. But I think you're on the right track. I think we need to go further and if it gets hot in the kitchen, I'll stay there with you.
Thank you very much.
You know, it's interesting, Jim, when you talk about that, think about what a lot of our high schools are doing at the end of the year, they're kinda doing an extended school year for some of those seniors that are really close. And so, that's kind of an example of that, but, you know, when you think about it, you know, can you do it in other classes?
I'd like to do it for everybody.
Yeah, right, right. I mean, it's an interesting concept and you can kinda see where this could kind of extend into that at some point. Okay, Ben Jones.
Thank you, ma'am chair. I have three separate questions, but they're short, I promise. When I look at it, I'm going back to the modeling of the state assessments and how our state assessments are scored, what it looks like, three or four, two, one. How does this competency model line up with how we score state assessments where we put a kid? Is it at all, is it related to it or is it, they not the same? I mean, are they totally different? Am I looking at the wrong things?
So, yes and no. So, Luke, Luke mentioned the focus documents that we have that have the emphasis of a 70, 20, 10 in terms of, I'll speak mathematics because that's my wheelhouse right now, right? The assessments are aligned to that focus document. So, if Lucas's instructional practices align to that focus document and his emphasis are in those areas, that then presumably, provided that he has that set up that way, then it would be related to how a student or could be, I don't know correlational data, we'd have to do a data study to kinda see, but I would think that it would line up. Now, they're not gonna be identical, exactly, you know, matching up, but, but that, that would be the intention of creating that and some of the things that you would take into account when you were creating your policies, I would believe.
Yeah, I was just, I was like.
If you guys have anything to add, please jump in.
Yes. I mean, it'd probably be more of a question for Randy. I mean, in, in regards to competency, when I go to people and already they're talking about, oh, this kid got a, you know, a level four on their state assessments or a level three, is that comparable to, you know, a level four is this kid is an absolute master at this concept? Is it, is the scale similar to how we do state assessments? Like, it would be probably a better way to phrase that question.
So, I, I think Melissa did a nice job answering that, but the grading policy of any teacher, let's just start at the teacher level, or any pod or building or district is entirely up to them. So, today, an A or B has no correlation to a three or four on the state exam. I think you saw a little bit closer alignment in what they presented, but that doesn't mean that, as Michelle talked about, Blue Valley would have a similar scale. So, I think because we're a decentralized system, we're trying though to say at our level, levels three and four, from the, for the best that teachers have set those standards to, to the best knowledge, which is now about sixth or seventh grade on, we'll eventually know all the way back to third, does equate at least to what ACT would call academic readiness, you know, at a cut score. So, there's some correlation to that, we know. I think whether they've aligned to that or not would be left to them.
Yeah. I appreciate that. And then through the lens, I have 10 post-secondary institutions in my district. How does this align with college admissions currently? I know there's a conversation about it changing, I know that, but that's just with K-BOR. I have a lot of private institutions, they might change with K-BOR, I don't know. But how does this, how do you prepare, I mean, from, from that aspect, preparing that kid from a technical standpoint, and this is probably into the weeds and I apologize for that, still meeting those college admissions in a different format?
Well, I can walk into those weeds with you. Not sharing it today with you guys, but I have a task force that has been created that is composed of high school teachers, two-year institutions and four-year institutions. And mathematics, again, my wheelhouse, so I apologize, but it could be replicated in other areas. And we are beginning conversations, we have our first full task force meeting on September 23rd, talking about aligning, what takes place in high school to that post-secondary. And one of the conversations that's, that has been proposed to be had is a pathway approach to education and, and for mathematics specifically speaking, if I'm a social, social science, like a social studies major, college algebra makes zero sense to my life, but statistics? Yeah, that, that's a wheelhouse, makes sense. So, how do we start aligning those practices? And then also, the most important thing that goes back to what was mentioned by, by, by the folks over here and the culture shift is establishing trust. And right now, there is not trust, not only within high schools, right? Like, we don't trust what each other's doing, but there's not trust between high schools in two years, between two years and four years, between high schools in four years. There's not. And so, I'm hoping that this task force will begin to expand upon the math advisory group that we have and developing that trust. And as we build trust with our parents and community, with the post-secondary world, and we make the change together, instead of having change done to me, I wanna be a part of that change. And that's what I keep telling people. Do you want this done to you or do you wanna be a part of it? Yeah, it's gonna be messy, you're gonna get a black eye, you might get thrown in jail to, you know, those sorts of things, but we're gonna be there to bring you a Dr. Pepper and, and so you aren't just drinking water and eating bread. So, that, I think that's happening. It's a long ways away, right? But I do think it's great that we're starting to have those conversations.
Yeah, and, and I, again, I'm not against this. I wasn't quite familiar with it until this morning, even though I got four phone calls on this because for some reason, when it comes to 259, it's listed numerically and numerically, I'm District 7, so I get the, some Wichita phone calls. I don't know why. Oh, it is the answering machine, I usually don't return them. But I also got stopped at the state fair. What do you think about Wichita's new grading system? Because it hit the news, it was 259s and I said, I, and I didn't even see it. So, I was, I asked Kathy, I said, okay, can you explain to me what Wichita's doing? Because I've had multiple questions. And, and she said, they'll be here today. So, I'm like, good. But with that, and this is probably a question to you, is that you were talked about that it's going to be academic only on that grading scale. How are you addressing the non-academic skills? Because as part of our vision, those non-academic skills are very important. How are you addressing reporting those to them? I'm just, I'm just curious.
So, so currently, our reporting system will address both of those in the elementary levels this year. And then post, or in middle school and high school, when we get into those grade levels, we will additionally, we will have academic and behavioral. But we're also planning on converting, so our transcripts will still continue to have a GPA in the, the letter grades.
Okay. So, as, as long as we're still addressing those non-academic skills, which are very important and I, and I would appreciate it, and said, well, it's not gonna be on there. And I'm like, ah, are they, are they secondary to the academic?
They, they will be on there.
Okay, good. So, I was, I appreciate that and, and thank you. And now I'm informed, so now when people tell me, I'm like, I know what they're doing and it's, you're fine.
Yeah, and to, and to add to that point, the non-academic or co-academic components are critical and essential. They're part of your vision. And so, we're definitely putting those up there in the forefront and, and it's a way that you can actually help students highlight their strengths. If I'm a student that's really actively engaged in the community and, and engaged in those things, those are, those are attributes and characteristics that we can leverage as teachers to help them in the classroom. And I don't, I don't know of a district that's implementing any form of this that doesn't have those non-academic, co-academic components apart, essential, I said, an essential part. So.
Anne Mall? I see you over there thinking.
Yeah, I've got two questions. Those of you who are doing high school, are you, you're converting the 1-2-3-4 to a letter grade?
So, yeah, so one of the things that I meant to say, actually, when he was speaking as well, we didn't share with you different examples that exist, but there is, there's a way in Iowa, for example, the state of Iowa's been doing standards-based grading for a long, long time, so they have some, they're further along in the process. In fact, USD 259 went up and did some training and information with them. And what they have chosen to do in most of their high schools is take their four-point proficiency scale or whatever the points proficiency scale is, and then they have a rubric that was pre-established before anything even started of how to convert that into a letter grade. And so, a student ends up getting it. And so, if you would like, if any of you would like some examples of that or more information, if you email me directly, I will be happy to get as much information as I can and, and pass that along to you. But that is a common practice right now. Until we get the post-secondary world to shift the conversation even more, it, it could be something that districts do. And it's also been a methodology to help shift the culture. And that as a parent, as long as I know that you're gonna eventually give my kid that letter grade that I understand, then I'm gonna go ahead and go along for the ride for a while. But eventually, what a lot of districts have done is started implementing a letter grade and then as they've been in that longer, they move away from it because the parents start saying, we don't even need that anymore because we have this information.
Well, I mean, if we're really looking at doing personalized learning, at what point in time do you assign that grade? You know what I mean? To me, it doesn't even make sense to convert it to a letter grade because at what point in time do you draw the line? Is it December 18th or, you know, if they're still working? Like, if we really believe that if a kid finishes Algebra 1 in November, you give them the credit and move on if they don't get it done till February? So, how, how, anyway, okay.
I think those are district-level conversations. As Dr. Watson mentioned, that's the nuances of having individual district controls and they'll have to ask that question. How do we want to and when do we want to?
So, my other question is, on the behavioral stuff, how, how do you convert, or do you, my question is, do you have a rubric that converts their behavior to a 1, 2, 3, or 4 so it's consistent?
Yes, it's very much similar to the academic standards in that if you were wanting a student to show proficiency in, let's say that one of the 21st century skills that you value is, is showing up on time. That's a bad way of phrasing it, right? But you could have a rubric that talks about whether or not a student's arriving to class on time, turning in their homework on time, arriving for different things on time and use that. Some districts have implemented it to where every, a student's grade, if you will, their, their report on that isn't just in my class, but it's a combination of what they're doing in my class, in your arts class, in the ELA classroom and all of that. And so, it's a, so showing, because we all know, some students, they all hate math. They all hate it. So, I'm just joking. Okay. Most students hate, hate math and so they show up late to class because they don't wanna be there. But the students that enroll in art classes tend to really love art class and they come early and they stay after school to work on their clay or to work on whatever, right? And so, except for the kids that are made to take the class. So, I think that some districts are doing it that way. That is why, when a district enters into this, I think it was said, 250 years this has been going on, one of the components of the course was talking about the history of grades and where it came from and why we went to an assembly line approach and why it's now necessary to go away from that approach because we're not producing those types of citizens that exist. And so, I think that establishing what it means in USD 305 for a student to represent civic engagement, how does that look? So, how are we gonna, what is, what is an exemplary student in civic engagement versus someone who's maybe down here? And what, what do we wanna call them? Do we wanna use the word exemplary? Do we wanna use approaching? What, what language do we wanna use and what message does that send?
It just seems like with all the wide range of things we're measuring with social, emotional, rather than teachers spending less time in the grade book, they're gonna be spending a lot more time in the grade book if they have to measure all these things and keep track of them so they can give a 1, 2, 3, or 4 on this whole long list of socially-emotional things.
I think what you might be envisioning is a lot longer than what typically has been in practice. Usually, the, the behavior components, at least that I've seen, has been maybe five to seven components and they, they lump a lot of stuff together. So, they just might just say civic engagement. And then when their rubric is defining it and involves multiple attributes and characteristics that line into that, and then, I mean, and you guys, feel free. Jolene, you wanna share? Because you're like doing this like you want to, so kinda share, share a little bit and that way you can talk.
Sure, I can share a little bit about how it has looked thus far in USD 309 Salina Public Schools. At the secondary level, we report those non-academic or co-academic standards separate from a student's academic standards. And we start calibrating on those day one of school. What does it look like to meet this level? And that feedback loop starts, you know, this is why you're, you're at this point, here's what you needed to get to this point. It also then leads our conversations at parent-teacher conferences. And our parents have been very impressed with, with that type of feedback in that they're finding a lot of connections and relations to what they see in the workforce in terms of, you know, being on time, being able to work on your own, those types of things. Students have a clearer picture about what that means and we're really able to support it in a positive way within our, within our school. So, thus far, starting with those conversations at our, at our parent-teacher conferences in October as well as then in February and March, those really have, really brought a sense of purpose and, and why we're doing what we're doing to, to then lead and guide those conversations. And, and parents have, they've expressed a lot of appreciation to that and that they find value in that.
Now, I can see how it might be more streamlined at an elementary level where in primary, they're with one teacher all day, but when you're with six teachers and they're measuring seven different things.
You know, the beautiful thing about that is then that starts conversations from classroom to classroom. classroom to classroom. And that we're talking about, you know, what if a student is doing this? How does this look? And then our team gets together, and we calibrate at the district level and say, okay, here are some things that we've talked about and concerns that we've had. How can we then make this better for this upcoming year? Which is exactly what our teachers did as they transfer, as they did this last year, that in May, we met, how's it gonna look this year? And that's, then, we, we took those steps to continue to improve that process.
Okay. Thank you.
Jean Clifford?
Thank you. I'm really excited about what you're doing. I think this is wonderful. I think it's gonna create a lot of success for students that may not have had as much success before. I, I've seen even this year, examples of extra credit for things like Kleenex, and half-credit or no-credit for late work. And that doesn't really reflect what the students learned in it. It certainly, you know, isn't motivating to a student. What I was kind of wondering about is, is there any way to track student improvement, academic learning improvement, that, that we could really use to show that this is a successful method of assessing a student's academic learning? And, and learning in the co-curricular areas as well? Thank you.
I could talk a little bit about the tool that we use in our district. You saw the, the red, yellow, and green component. You only saw a screenshot of what that is. That's a very in-depth tool in which teachers can really dig down and see what the progression of a student over continuous time on a specific standard. And so that really helps us see, you know, where is it that the student's at? We get to see that, we can see that progress in, in tracking that mastery. So that's a tool that we use in our district to kind of help support that. If that helps.
That, that's great. I think we can't have too much data. I think this is really important, and, and the more information we can use and collect to show that it's working or needs to be tweaked, I think that'll be very helpful. Thank you so much.
Well, thank you. I know we've had a lot of questions, and I'm gonna go out on a limb here and say that we're gonna want you back. I think probably at some point in time, we're gonna have additional questions of how it's going, changes maybe you're seeing as a result of kind of cycling through some things, your communication, things I have a feeling that the board's gonna want an update. So I'm, I'm just like saying, I'm going out on a limb here and tell, saying, I think we're gonna want you back. I'd also just, I kind of had a little lightbulb moment over here, where I think maybe, Jolene, it might have been you that were talking about this, the standards reference that the upper grades, and you know, how they're, the parents are really beginning to buy into that. I can really see that also tying in with the individual plans of study. It seems like to me, there just is a real natural connection there. And I can see that kind of evolving into kind of really melding together, which I think's great. So we've taken a lot more of your time than we planned on, but we appreciate you guys coming up and spending some time with us. I know this is new. It really does fit in with our vision, and I know it's gonna cause some angst for some of our internal customers and our external folks, our parents and our community members. But it seems like a lot of you are kind of working through that and gonna continue to work through that. So that'll probably be some updates we'll want. So I really appreciate everybody coming today. We're gonna go ahead and take our break, and then we'll have our next agenda item. So thank you once again.
Thank you.
Okay, well, welcome back. We are certainly excited to have our folks from Kansas School for the Deaf and Kansas School for the Blind with us again today for their quarterly update. We always look forward to these. So it looks like, who's going first? Luann? Okay, all right. Luann, come on up.
Turned on? Is this better? Is this better?
You would turn it on from there.
There it is. There it is.
Now we're on.
We're on.
One second. All right, can we hear the interpreter now? All right.
Yes.
This is our fourth week of school for this school year, and we've already had a wonderful start. It's been a very smooth beginning of the year. Almost all of the positions that were vacant are filled now. We are not having an issue finding teachers at this point, and we're very fortunate. This year, the Kansas School for the Deaf, when we had our opening theme, it was the power of we. And the reason that I picked that theme for us this year is because there will be a considerable amount of changes on campus related to accreditation, the strategic plan, all of the renovation that's taking place, which I'll update you on in a few moments. And I wanted to ensure that we started with a sense of unity, and that that will be our theme throughout the year. This quarterly report will update you on two different areas: data sharing for the year and numbers, and then our current activities, and what's happening on campus, and projects, and so forth. There are a lot of big, exciting things happening. I really wanted to emphasize to the employees at KSD that everything that we see happening, we're not considering it to be chaotic, we're considering it to be progress. It seems like things can be a mess at times. People might have to change locations, they might have to go to more meetings and so forth, but it's all about our students. And that everything is part of the process to lead to progress, and it's for students and families. I will be showing you our new vision and mission, and our diversity statements. I'm going to hold on the belief statements, because that's quite long. Our, all of our programs are growing, off-campus and on-campus based. No decline in any of those numbers, so that's very exciting. And the new challenges that are coming up are exciting as well. I'm excited to show you the rapid growth that we've been experiencing. We are, as part of our progress this year, is our accreditation with CESD and KISA. They'll be out on November 10th, and we need everybody to be involved with the interviews. The visiting team wants to be able to schedule specific groups of people, teachers, parents, students, community members. And so I emphasize that we will need everybody involved, and we want to ensure that everybody has a voice in the process. We had a lot of new staff join us this year, 13. We have 23 school districts that are involved with the Blended Learning Program, and that's up from 18 last year. In the fall last year, we started with four, and we're up to 23. So that's just some examples of our growth. Our early childhood playground got new asphalt poured. We got some donations from Atmos Gas for our early, for our elementary playground, and those have been disruptive to activities at recess, but they've been important for progress. Our language assessment program, we assessed 20 students last year. This year, we assessed 125 between the ages of birth to 5. So all of these things are happening, and again, we need everybody's involvement, we need flexibility, and we need cooperation from staff. And with all of these things happening, we want to ensure that there is transparency within the community and with the board as well, so that you're aware of what's happening on campus. Somebody asked me today about the Roth renovations, which is our auditorium. We did receive the full amount of funding through SIBF dollars. And then also for the Roberts Building renovations, which will be more cosmetic. We are in the process now of working with the engineers and architects, and working on the final scope of work in order to put it out for bid for general contracting. And so we are in process with that, and we are looking for the work to probably start November, December on the auditorium. The Roberts Building is our secondary academic building, and we'll likely be waiting until the end of the school year to start the work on that building. Or we may work on one floor at a time and move students around to different locations during that work. So again, it's progress, and it's for the students. And when it's done, the campus will be beautiful. This is our new KSD vision statement. It's very exciting for me. It's a complete change from our old vision statement that related, it was more broad, and it spoke to removing barriers and obstacles. This vision statement, I believe, fits with the Kansas Can vision that the board has, that all students can be successful. And so it states that every student who is deaf or hard of hearing in Kansas will achieve personal success and become a responsible and productive citizen. And then our mission statement for the Kansas School for the Deaf is on the screen. It's pretty much the same as it was before. We added two words, where it says, "all students that we serve." Meaning that we are not only focusing on the campus program, but we're focusing on serving students throughout the entire state of Kansas. And using the terminology "language-rich environment" doesn't refer only to ASL, but it refers to English as well. Spoken English, literacy skills, and being able to receive and express yourself in ASL. And so you see students here signing the mission statement on the, and we created a banner to hang on campus, and we'll have the, a poster up in all of the rooms on campus, because we do want to emphasize the mission statement. We did seek feedback on the mission statement from the staff, community, and students, and this is what we arrived at. And we want to emphasize that each child is seen as a whole, and to ensure that all students we serve achieve their full potential in a language-rich environment. New for us this year is to have a diversity statement, and it was very much necessary based on feedback from students. Forty-six percent of our students are students of color, and so that's almost half. We felt as though we needed to be respectful of the diversity and the various cultures within our programming, and we developed this diversity statement. The next slide, I'll be sharing the data with our student enrollment. Our numbers are going up. These numbers are based on the end of the school year numbers. So at the end of the school year last year, we had 146 students. And that ties directly to our performance-based budgeting measures. We are to report that to the legislature, and I wanted to share that with you as well. Our goal is to increase by five students each year, and we were able to meet that goal. And this year, at the end of the year, or at the beginning of the year, the number had gone down to 133 students, because eight had moved out of state. Four students went back to their LEA, and then the students that grad, of the students that graduated for a return for the post-secondary program. So we have 133 students at the beginning of the year, including 16 who are new students, and we're still receiving students. What happens with students that are in the early intervention program? When they turn three, they're eligible to attend KSD, and so we expect those numbers to grow. And because of that, we've hired a third early childhood teacher. And then as far as the post-secondary K-Star program, we have lower numbers than typical this year, and so we're analyzing that to determine what the difference is, if it's a lack of advertisement, lack of interest, not getting the word out enough about that. So we're working on that at this point. ESY numbers are extended school year. Those numbers have increased each year. And hopefully, we will be able to offer more programming for students that aren't, for students that aren't eligible to come to ESY at KSD, because they take advantage of programming in their district. And we hope to get that word out more. In addition, for students who have ESY on their IEP, in order to maintain their skills and their goals, and avoid regression by going to ESY. A lot of those districts, or a lot of students don't qualify for ESY because they don't have regression. And so we are going to be establishing a STEM camp at the secondary level for those students to attend. And so we'll see if that helps to get more students on campus that may not be there for ESY. Our next slide. I want you to be aware that any teacher that works with deaf and hard-of-hearing students is required to have a dual endorsement, one in general ed content area, and the other in deaf education. My desire is for us to have the highest-quality licensed teachers in the area of deaf education as well, and be duly endorsed, not only on campus, but throughout the state as well. And so the data here shows the ones that are duly endorsed are in blue, and then the ones that are in green have just a single endorsement. And so really pushing teachers to get that dual endorsement, either in deaf education or the content area, whichever area they don't have. And we would support teachers in being able to do that with tutoring, taking the, for taking the praxis, or perhaps going back to school, not funding that for them, but supporting that. And so my goal is for us to have 100% staff duly licensed. Our partnerships are increasing throughout the community. The numbers you are, you see here are meaningful partners that we have. Most of our partnerships are with agencies and local, state organizations. One area that we would like to grow our partnership outreach is with businesses. Not only in our local area, but throughout the state as well, with the goal being that we're preparing the workforce for our students upon their graduation, when they return to their community. And so thanks to Ben Jones for connecting us to the Estac Career Fair in November. We'll be bringing students out to that. Middle school students in February to take a look and see. He stated that there'll be 3,000 students there. So a lot of different career options for them to look at, and we want them to know what their options are for when they move back home. These are the numbers related to American Sign Language classes that family and community members are taking. And so we were very curious about the level of interest, because parents may want to communicate with their students at home or in the community, and that number is actually growing slowly. I was talking to Lori on the way here, and I would like to see more growth in that area, especially in the western half of the state. Even though we do have the online classes, we do have deaf mentoring available, I would still like to determine a way to offer more classes that are face-to-face. A lot of people prefer to learn a new language face-to-face instead of virtually. And so I'd like to find a way to grow that program. This is a count of how many districts and tiny-kay networks we're working with, that we provide technical support to. There are fairly small numbers, however, they have improved over the last two years. We are working with 91 school districts throughout the state, out of our almost 300 districts in Kansas. districts in Kansas, and that's only a third, which is not satisfactory. I know that we can do more in that area. We are working with 15 tiny K networks, and that's the Birth to Three Early Intervention Program. We have 33 in this state, so we're working with less than half. We need to do a better job in that area as well of getting out and working with those networks and getting to know the specific network or the district that they're working with. And of course, not all of them will have a deaf or hard-of-hearing child in their network or their school building, but we need to reach as many of them as we can. The next slide has some interesting numbers on it. Students that have received access to deaf-appropriate intervention and services has increased significantly. We are at 453 students, and that's through outreach as of last year, that have received direct services outside of the Kansas School for the Deaf campus. Over the last several years, we had struggled with finding the correct data. We always had a ballpark figure of the number of students that were receiving services through the HAP program, receiving services through Birth to Three program, and we had a lot of duplications in our count. And we wanted to be able to narrow that down and have it very specific to how many individual students were receiving services, even though they might be receiving services in several programs. And so we have that determined now to be 453 without duplication. If we were to look at the total number of students we're serving on campus, which was 133, and the number through outreach, we're at 586. And so that's almost 600 students. That's very eye-opening for us. We always have told people that we thought there were around 750 deaf or hard-of-hearing students throughout the state. I suspect that there is much more, probably double that number of 600 that either haven't been identified or located yet. The information that I received that was 750 was from the previous special ed director, and that was for 750 students that were on IEPs. And I'm not sure what that current number is. I'll be meeting with Burt Moore in October to discuss that with him, to learn the number of students that are on IEPs. And we don't have the information for students that are on 504s. Those students may have a mild hearing loss and so forth, so we want to make sure that we are reaching out and what the proportionate numbers are, and to find creative ways to reach out, to find those students. Our total number of students, again, ages birth to 21, is 586 that we're serving. And then our graduation rate remains at 100%. That's exciting news. Our post-secondary outcomes, you'll see a three-year period listed here. Blue is the percentage of graduates that have higher education. Green represents the number of students that have enrolled in post-secondary educational training or certification programs. Orange represents students that have come back to the K-Star program. And yellow is employment, and red is unemployment. The data we collect every year, and it changes every year based on having a small number of graduates, and we can't put very specific information because of personal identifying information as far as who's unemployed and all of that. And so this is the best data that we have at this point, and we keep an eye on that. And we are seeing more students coming back for the K-Star program, and they feel as though they need a couple of additional years to hone their skills before they're ready to move on to post-secondary education. All right, moving on to our CESD and KISA accreditation update. We have a date that's been decided on. November 10th is when they'll be out. The visiting team is comprised of four members, two that are retired superintendents, one principal, and one student life staff person. They'll be on campus for three days, from Sunday through Wednesday at noon. We had conducted a self-study with surveys to students, staff, and community members, and we received a total of 600 responses between all of the different surveys. The numbers were very impressive, and I'm very happy with the results. Of the results that I received, there were certain areas that I knew that we would need to work on, and I knew there were areas that would be our strengths. As far as the self-study, we're almost finished with that. It's a very thick document. That's due next week for us to turn into them. And then we will have their school visits scheduled that will come out in October. And I know that the visiting team will ask for some board members to be interviewed as well. So likely, Michelle, perhaps Randy, we'll have to find out what they're looking for, and I'll try to give you as much advance notice as I can. I know that you have very busy schedules, and that could possibly take place over the phone or in person. From the survey, we had 95 out of 120 parents respond, which was a very good number. So we had 75% of parents and students respond to the survey, and these are comments that were pretty common. They feel that the campus is safe, well-maintained, welcoming. One comment from a parent that feels that they live at a distance would like to find ways to become more involved. They state that KSD is always looking for ways to improve and not just going with the status quo. And so they believe that we are vital to their students and their community. This is my last slide, and wanted to talk about the strategic plan. We have a very rough draft of that at this point. I've asked for Bart Schwartz to hold on the process that we're in because we wanted to get the results back from the CESD self-study, because I would like the strategic plan to be comprehensive. I want it to include the Board of Ed outcomes, the deaf community outcomes, the self-study, the CASB information. Would like for all of that to be included into one complete strategic plan. Want to be able to include stakeholders, the Board of Education, and the deaf community as well, as the rest of the community. What I would like to share with you is I've had a lot of time and thought related to deaf education and what that looks like today, and being able to reframe the perspective on that. The perspective has been more of benevolence and feeling sorry for people that are deaf or hard-of-hearing and the need to fix that, and would like to change that perspective from hearing loss to deaf gain, and what is the gain for a person who's deaf or hard-of-hearing. And so one example related to that. John Corbett was at the leadership conference this last July, and what he continued to focus on is focusing on the child's need. What does the child need rather than what can the school do for the child, and then trying to work that out. And so I like the idea of reframing that thinking of what deaf education looks like for deaf and hard-of-hearing children. So to wrap up, this will not be a slow year for us. We will be very busy. Again, progress is not inevitable. It's up to us to make that happen, to make change for our students, and we look forward to this year very much to see where we end up. Thank you.
Thank you, Luanne. Appreciate that. Board members, questions? Michelle?
This is on a separate topic.
It's okay?
Thank you, Madam Chair. About the vaping posters, were you able to get the vaping posters up into the school that were emailed to you?
I did receive the email with the information and what's going on with the committee work, and I appreciate being part of that conversation about promoting working with families and so forth and educating and outreach. It's on our agenda to be discussed internally, and I've not received any posters to be able to post at this point.
Do you need some help from me on that?
Yes, that would be great.
Okay. Very good.
Janet Wall?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just simply wanted to compliment you on your outreach and how well that's going because that's kind of a big issue certainly for me, and I think the rest of the board, and I think you're doing an outstanding job on that. So thank you, and just continue working, and let's get each child in this state who has a deaf problem involved. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Steve Roberts?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We've been talking about grades today and whether we use A, B, C, D, F, the traditional five demarcations, or we use 4, 3, 2, 1, 0. Do your teachers typically have five grades for each subject, and is there something we need to be mindful of as we work on grading systems that fit the standards more seamlessly?
I was not here for the previous presentation. Amanda filled me in a little bit on that, of what the general topic was because she was in the room, and I understand the discussion was grades versus measuring soft skills and behavior. We do use letter grades for all of the subjects and all of the grades, and I know that the elementary school is looking at changing letter grades to more behavior grades, and so the E, S, and U system. And so that will require quite a bit of study to make that determination. I know that there are some faults in using letter grades. At times, those can be misused for the measurement, and then there's psychology related to grades, you know, if you don't. And then, of course, there's participation grades. If you don't participate in class, then you get a zero, and then that has an effect on the overall grade. And that's something I would be very open to taking a look at as a whole, determining what the pros and cons are, and then going from there.
Jean Clifford?
I wanted to echo Janet's comments also. Thank you so much for extending your reach out to Western Kansas. I think there's a lot of families and individuals out there that have benefited from being a part of the School for the Deaf and having your outreach to our area. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Luanne, thank you. Yeah, I'll echo what Janet and Jean both said with outreach. I know we really put a big emphasis on that a few years ago, and the school's obviously responded and is doing a better job there, so appreciate that. Would like to, you talked a little bit about your students' high school and your ones in the immediate post-secondary years. We had a presentation yesterday, and would like to maybe encourage you as far as internship and workforce opportunities. There are workforce alliance centers throughout the state, and Johnson County would have one. And if you haven't made contact with them, and I'm sure somebody here could help give you that information, that might be a really good way for you guys to begin, you and probably John also, to begin to kind of look at what can, where can you partner with some community members? Because there may be some opportunities there, so you really may want to check with the Workforce Center. I don't know where it is in Kansas City, but I think it's Kansas City and Y and, or Johnson County and Y and, I'm not sure. But that might be a real good opportunity for, as you guys are looking for other ways to get kids involved in some internship types of opportunities. So you might take a look at that.
I'm not sure who I would contact to get that information. I believe Robert Cooper, the executive director at the Kansas Commission for the Deaf and Hard-of-Hearing, has been contacted by them as well, but I don't want to miss out on that opportunity. I'll check into that some more.
And I think we can, I think we can get a contact for you guys and get that to you.
Awesome, thank you.
Because I think, for both schools, I think it'd be a great opportunity. You know, our students in those two programs have some great skills, and they certainly can be very employable, so there might be some opportunities there. So I'd really encourage that for both schools.
Absolutely. I appreciate that. We want to take advantage of every opportunity, every contact, networking, and so forth to improve the employment rate of our students. We're still at 70% underemployment or unemployment. We would like to change those numbers, and that's true for any other disability group as well.
Absolutely. Yep, that'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you.
John, welcome.
I'm taking a little bit different tack than Luanne. I'm going to do a brief presentation, mostly focused on the highlights, using photographs to kind of show where we've been since the last time I was here. We're excited to give you an update and overview on the progress we made toward our goals. I'll do this again through photos, some short summaries. Please know that we're appreciative of your involvement, your support, and we do welcome your feedback. I appreciate, Madam Chair, your comments about employment as we go through this. I'll reference some of those things. I apologize about the mic. Is this wrong? Okay. So our goals, if you remember, our goals two years ago when we started the process, our goals were to restructure our administration, expand our outreach, increase our visibility, offer more professional development, and improve student transitions. One of the things that we know in education, we have to stick with things to know if we're making any progress. Those have continued to guide our school, kind of the North Star of where we're going, and we haven't really wavered from that for two years. So everything we do kind of goes through that lens, and I wanted just to remind you of what those goals are. Before you is our new viewbook. I asked Peggy to pass it out. Thank you for doing that. It's designed to increase our visibility and share the diversity of our programs with parents, teachers, and administrators, and working with our website and social media sites. We hopefully will no longer be the best-kept secret in Kansas. I want to note that these really were free of charge. We were able to have the KC Blind All-Stars provide the photography and the editor and the designer of this product. So I encourage you and ask that you share this. I provided it to Burt Moore last month. This is sort of a preliminary document. We'll continue to refine it, but it does help talk about who we are and tell how we can assist parents, students, and school districts through photos and some quotes. So I encourage you to share that document. The KC Blind All-Stars Walk and Run will be on September 21st. This will provide another opportunity to highlight our students' capabilities. We'll have runners in wheelchairs. Some KSSB students who are blind will run with a guide. All the proceeds go to our foundation, which in turn supports activities like Space Camp, building an accessible playground, and providing scholarships. I know some of you said you'd love to come, but you got family obligations. Family comes first, but this really benefits all the students across the states, not just the students on our campus. So I encourage you to come out for that, and thank you for your support. We continue to hire some of the best, most highly qualified teachers in the region. I know Luanne was talking about dual certification. Most of the folks you see here are triple-certified. They come through a teacher program, then they get a teacher, the visually impaired certification, and most of them are orientation mobility specialists, so they're triple-certified staff, which are hard to find, but we're proud of that because they're very diverse and can help in a lot of different situations. We had two new teachers join our crew this year, Molly Riordan and Pam Arbiter, and we're thrilled with the work that they're doing. They're really going gangbusters in providing really more workshops, more mentoring of teachers, more direct service, and demonstrating how to conduct assessments. In Salina in November, November 8th, we'll be going back to Salina, and we'll have our Vision Symposium. This is the second year of our symposium. Last year, we had 65 teachers. Last year we had 65 teachers. We expect at least 75 this year, so we're starting to fill up. But this is an opportunity for us to talk about hot topics in the field, to bring people together and for our own staff to, to learn and grow in their profession. Topics will include learning media assessments, strategies for teaching Braille, orientation mobility, and, and others. So I encourage you to come out to that. Some of you said you might be able to make it. We're focusing on parent engagement. You can't really make progress in education unless parents are involved and are asking good, sometimes hard questions. This year we just hosted a luncheon to kick off the year, standing room only, which was great to see. And I asked my teachers to have two face-to-face parent-teacher conferences each semester, so we're really going to try to be diligent about that, asking them, how can we meet your needs? Can we come to you? Do you want to come to us? Is it a webinar? Is it a phone call? What is it that works for you so we can listen and hear our parents? So that, that's something new for us and I was proud of that. We also want them to understand how to advocate for Braille, for instruction and travel skills and training and assistive technology, no matter where they're at. If students are going to be successful, those are the skills they're going to have to have. So those are the part of the conversations we're having with our parents. We have about 44 kids on campus. People always, that's the first question people ask me, how many kids do you have? And 44 doesn't sound like a lot for us. That's a big improvement. Just a couple of years ago, we were around 25. Each week I get, we have hard conversations with district about, is this a good fit for your student? So our numbers are growing and that's a direct correlation between the growth and our outreach. We figured that would happen. Now it's come to fruition, so we're proud of that. Our transition team is pictured, pictured here and we have more students in college than the TEC, which is a Technical Education Center, and they're learning to take charge of their own programs. The staff here spend countless hours helping students advocate and push themselves to learn new skills and, and new experiences, so I wanted to share their photo. Madam Chair, you talked about other opportunities. Two gentlemen pictured here are working with our transition team. One is Jim Atwater on the left. He's with In-Return Strategies and on the right is Rob Hoffman with Inclusion Works. They're connecting our students with hiring managers and employers while students are on our campus. That's something different and they're doing it and opening doors in ways that we simply could not do alone. I think really, I'm more convinced than ever that business has, has to be part of the equation. It can't be just the same pathways and routines that we've always done, so I'm trying to make a push. We are trying to make a push to work with, with businesses who know business. You have to get past the front door to get a job, so these are the things that we're working on with, with transition. I want to thank Ben Jones for inviting KSSB to the SDAC Career Expo. We've made touch with them. This will be in Hutchinson. There's two events, one in November, one in February. Our staff will be representing and we're working to bring students who are blind, visually impaired, to those events, so thank you, Ben, for inviting us to that. We recognize the importance of role models when students come to our campus. We're fortunate to have staff who can serve as models for students. You see one of our staff, Christian Puet, here in his dog Broadway. They're presenting community education events to promote Braille Guide Dog Protocol and how technology is used for independence. They're very curious, kids are very curious about that. Sometimes when they come to our campus, they want to see others who look like them and others who are adults who are successful. So we're proud to have Christian and Broadway as a part of it. David Westbrook is also pictured here. He's a friend of our school who visits with our students and parents. He lost his vision as a teen, has become a successful businessman who gives back to his community and, and often visits our school. Some of the partnerships that we have, I want to highlight, we have two with KU this year. One is the Division of Molecular Biosciences, part of the School of Liberal Arts and Sciences. Ondrilla D. on the left has a brother who's blind and she approached just about making the DNA modules accessible for students here in Kansas. And then on the right is Dr. Lynn Villa Fuerte, who's working with our staff to provide a series of learning activities throughout the year. So DNA Day happens not just at our school, it happens at many schools in Kansas and they wanted to make sure that it was accessible to other students, so they're going to pilot it with us. We'll try to extend that learning beyond just one day, but we're excited about that partnership. Another one with KU is with the School of Architecture and Design and Dr. Nilou Vaquille. She has 17 third-year students who are working with us to, to make Brighton Rec. Center the focus of a studio design project. The project will reimagine the building and provide plans to design a new space for students and community. They got all excited because they called it a mid-century modern and I have no idea what that is, but they got very excited about that, so we're happy to partner with Dr. Vaquille and her 17 students. This is, this goes to a question about business or the statement about the importance of, of business. We hosted a business after-hours this month with the KC Blind All-Stars and really what we were doing was highlighting the importance of business to opening their, their doors to our kids. So we brought them to our campus, had a nice event there and, and have made a lot of contacts through events like this. Our new coffee cart and, and machine have, have been delivered, at least the, the cart part of it has, the machine is, we're still waiting for that, but Messenger Coffee and Cause Coffee liked what we were doing with our, our student coffee cart and thought there was a better opportunity or better way to do that, so they handcrafted a nice bigger cart for us so that our kids will have more space to sell more stuff, so we're excited about that. Another example of partnerships, Mark One donated some money so we could have a, a new sensory room. This is a room really for students who want to work with, with therapists, occupational therapy, physical therapy, and for, to help self-regulation. So this is a, a nice donation that we're very grateful for. Our low-vision clinics, one is happening today. They're supported by the Kansas Lion Sight Foundation. These sessions provide parents an opportunity to sit with an ophthalmologist or optometrist and then learn really important information about their child's remaining vision and how to maximize it. I can't tell you how much parents really enjoy sitting for an hour with a doctor to, to get new information and about how that can benefit their child. So these are exciting and they don't just happen on our campus, they're all over the state. Salina, Hutch, Garden City, Hays, places like that. Our STEM and, and computer science programs are underway. We get first crack at piloting a new STEM module that's developed by Cosby. This is the Council of Schools for the Blind. We also have representatives from a large software company. I can't tell you who because they made us sign a non-disclosure agreement, but they are helping us develop accessible computer science course that'll be offered online in the spring. They're pictured here down in our state library, looking at accessible materials and trying to figure out how to make Python and Java, Java accessible to students who are visually impaired. These are industry-recognized languages, not some arcane language that's accessible. It's something that kids can leave with to say, I've got some experience in, in a, in a language that's very familiar to business, so we're excited about that. The last, the last thing I wanted to point out was we have a, a bid process that is finalized now for a campus wave-finding system. You may have seen these if you go to an airport or a transit station. Basically it is a wave to use Bluetooth beacons that are connected to a phone app that'll help those who are blind, low-vision, or, or those who are sighted navigate our campus whether they're outside or, or inside. Sometimes we have guests who show up and say, how do I get to the, to the library? Well, they're at, at the front. They have no idea how to get there. This will help them get there independently and it helps our students practice what they will see when they leave our campus and go out in the public as adults, so we're excited about this. It'll be installed this year. Some reminders, we have a budget submission coming up. You will get our budget submission before anybody. That'll be delivered to the board for your review. There's lots of data in there. I didn't mention data this time so much. It'll be in that report. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer that. We're in year three of KISA. That'll happen in the spring. We do have a strategic plan as well. We are using Greenbush Support non-stop. We want to thank Greenbush for, for their help. We're doing more instructional coaching this year with our teachers to focus on instruction and look at things like grading, the things you were talking about this morning. What does that mean for our students? I mentioned the run, the symposium, and then of course our Braille Challenge events will happen this winter in February and March. Hopefully not in a snowstorm this year. Last, last year we did it in the middle of a snowstorm. That kind of hindered our numbers a little bit, but that, that really is the gist of what I wanted to share with you today in photos. I hope that the theme that you sensed was partnership and, and business opportunities and, and pushing hard in all directions to make sure that kids have greater accessibility to the same things all kids have. So I want to thank you for your support. If you could share information about our school, you need more of those viewbooks, I'd be happy to hand those out. I will stand now for questions.
Thank you, John. I know Janet Wall has a question and there may be others. Janet?
I didn't know I did that. I thought maybe that was, whatever I did.
I figured you had a question anyway.
I always have a question. I don't have, I don't have a question, it's just my compliments. I think you're, it's amazing what you're doing with outreach and all these other things. I'm so proud. I guess the most thing I can compliment you the most on is telling the secret, because I think you guys are kind of both getting at the fact that these are, these are no longer the best-kept secrets in Kansas. They're still kind of a secret, but you're doing a good job on getting it out there. So thank you for everything you're doing because I, I think you're definitely moving in the right direction.
Appreciate the comments. People do still say I've been here 50 years and never been up here, but we're changing that because we are much more transparent now.
I think having all these groups in that you're doing, this is amazing because I, I don't recall that happening so very much in the past and I think this is amazing that all these groups are being included and invited to see the campus and just visit.
Right. It's, we say it's, it's not our campus, it's the state's campus, so we encourage people to come. Okay. Need some more?
Yeah, we need some more of this.
So sorry, I'll, I'll make sure that I give those to Peggy. We're making a new run of those, of those. We made a few minor changes and so when the new ones come out, I'll make sure that the board has, everybody has a copy. I apologize, we were a little bit short. Two or three, I think.
Three.
Randy Scott.
John, I'd like for you and Luann both to speak to, I, I think you've embraced, both of you have embraced the board's challenge to don't just serve kids at your school, but serve kids wherever they are. Talk though about the challenges that we spoke about just recently, about serving kids either at home or at your place and just educating other educators. I think the board would, would love to have that discussion of, of the sense of frustration that I think both of you feel at times from you. I think it would be helpful for them to know.
I'll, I'll just, I'll answer briefly as succinctly as I can. I appreciate that and would love, you know, kind of a, a longer conversation about that. You know, we really, really try to roll out the red carpet and honor the work that schools are doing. We know that it's challenging, it's really hard to meet the needs of all kids, especially when you don't know a lot about those kids or how, how to meet their needs or you have shortages of teachers. So we've really, really worked hard to, to make that a positive experience. There are times, occasions where simply new staff don't understand the importance of, of what a student might need at that particular time. You know, our vision is right service, right location, right, you know, right time and, and we try to adhere to that and, and sometimes we say the right place is right where they're at. If we can support them where they're at, we do that and we've taken that seriously, but there are times and places when more intensive supports are needed. And I think that's really what we need, your help in, in conveying to districts, is that sometimes it's okay to say, we need a little bit extra help. We work really hard to, to minimize the disruption in a student's life, to give them the skills that they need so they can move on. We're just as proud when they leave our campus as we are when they come to our campus. So I would just encourage you to, to let directors know that it's not a, a failure to ask for some help in some instances and that's really why we exist. We're here to help them.
I'll let the interpreter get in place. We have had a recent situation. For example, there was a family that had moved to Kansas that wanted to be able to send their child to the School for the Deaf in Alatha. They received resistance from the school district in this specific case and they're, and the district stated that, told the parent no, that they could serve the student, they didn't agree to send the student to a special school. And so it turned out then that the parents are at a loss now, not knowing what to do and they contacted KSD, they contacted the Department of Education, asking for assistance. And we're sort of in a precarious situation with what to do there. We want to support what's best for the student and I think it's just very important to let the districts know that it's okay to send a student to a special school or to the School for the Deaf if that's what will benefit them the most. And so that's just recent resistance that has been there. Another example would be a recent experience that I had, a meeting to, a meeting with the special ed director and I'm not going to say which director, wanting to reach out and ask for more opportunities to come to the district and, and share with students and families and teach, and staff. And the response from the director was, no, because you're stealing our students. And we would just want the districts to know that we're very open. They can ask us for support. We aren't out to steal students to get them on campus. We just want to be able to determine how to partner with them and how we can sit down and help serve the best needs of the students. And there are other stories from previous years, but I think we need to just move forward and build the best relationship with districts that we can and remove that sense of, of urgency that they have to keep the student in their district.
I kind of want to follow up on that, Luann. For the student that wants to go, or the parents who wants a student to go to the School for the Deaf, they have a process they can go through at their district, do they not? I mean, they should.
Correct.
And I would hope.
They do have a process.
I would hope they're doing that with all due diligence.
A month has gone by and the parents are becoming very desperate and they are wanting help being able to get their student enrolled and the district is saying that they need to wait for the 30 days and the family intentionally moved here so that their student could attend. They did invite a representative from the school to the meeting, but the decision had already been made at that point that the student was to stay in the district.
And then if my memory serves me correctly, they have the opportunity to object to that. So that's probably in process.
And that has to go through a due process.
Right. Which takes time.
And, and they're trying to avoid having to get to that. Want to be able to support the family, trying to connect them to the Department of Education, families together. Mark Ward with some maybe legal advice and the student, you know, at this point's going home crying and upset and the parents are having a difficult time and we're, as a school, we're kind of stuck in that precarious position because of our role and not wanting to push one way or the other.
Yeah, it's difficult for you to advocate one way or the other. Sure, sure. Jim Porter has a question.
I just want to follow up on that and this is, I don't know who to ask, but what's the cost of a local school district to send a student to either one of your schools?
The only cost would be for transportation. To the school district. There is no charge for tuition or any other, anything else. If they live out of the state, then there is a cost for boarding and tuition, but however, the only responsibility of the school district is to provide transportation. And for a student that had severe multiple disabilities that might need a para, the district would need to provide that adult support.
Yeah, I should have known the answer to that, but I didn't, so I, and so, so it is not a significant cost factor to the school district?
I just, I just wanted to echo what Luann was saying and my understanding is that there's some partial reimbursement for that transportation as well.
That is correct.
I think I've seen you guys, you're going to council superintendent meetings some and stuff, so, and I think one time there was an opportunity, maybe you guys were talking about your outreach program and the difference between your outreach and your in-school program, if, if I'm remembering correctly, is that right?
I know that I, the council superintendent's had a meeting in Topeka last year where I presented and I think Luann probably has presented there as well.
Correct. We both did present to the council.
Have you, and I don't know exactly how, but the special ed directors, I assume they have meetings? Have you gone to special ed director meetings also?
We have. And it seems to me that they are very receptive of our presentations when we come out. There are specific districts that we do experience resistance from and so obviously we need to maintain the connection with them. so, obviously, we need to maintain the connection with them and work on that. And we, and just continue to go as often as necessary-
Right.
-to those meetings.
Our field service staff, we attend those meetings regularly in each region. So, we're represented at those, those meetings either by our field service staff, or sometimes are myself.
Well, it seems like to me you're both being very proactive in trying to help bridge some of those gaps. And I know with some, it just, it's going to take a little time, which, you know, we're all impatient and want to get kids the best service right now. So, I really appreciate you guys working on this. And I think the board will continue to do whatever we can to assist in any way. And I certainly know that KSD is also.
I would like to make one additional comment, if I may. I believe that the interpretation of the language that's in the handbook, and the definition of least restrictive environment, the definition of inclusion, leaves, leaves that interpretation wide open. And so, there's not a lot of standardization to that and the way that the language is written into the statute. And it's related to placement. And it appears as though the, it would cause the districts to believe that they're responsible to keep the student in their school. Otherwise, they have to report to the state of the least restricted, least restrictive environment. And it's the 80%, 20% special school, 2% cap that I'm referring to. And I think at that point, they're not sure how to determine what's best for the student. And so, I think that could be a part of it. I think the interpretation is wide open.
Yeah, I understand. And that's kind of a result of federal caps, if I remember. So, but the ultimate thing is, and I hope the folks listening understand, you've got to do what's best for that child, regardless of federal caps. Do what's best for the child.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, board members? Well, thank you again for your update. And I'd encourage you, keep letting I jotted down a few dates of a few things, so I can get them on my calendar. And encourage you to continue to let us know opportunities that are available, because I know the board, board members are interested. So, we appreciate that. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, board members, we are into reports. I think we'll go ahead and get started. I'm kind of guessing with the length of the reports, we may need to take a break at some point in time before we come back. But why don't we at least get started on this? And then maybe a little after 12:00 or so, we'll take a little break, and then we may need to come back. I am going to start with committee reports. Dina, you had policy committee yesterday, so anything that, any update on policy committee?
Well, we have been having discussions, and we're not quite finished yet. So, we will meet at least one more time.
Janet will be-
You just love it, don't you, Janet?
Janet will be particularly happy to hear from you.
And, well, when we started getting into it, we thought we had it all handled from last year. And then, thought, well, maybe there's a few things that might need to be handled.
Very good.
So, anyway, there will be further things to, for this, for the entire board to, to discuss a little later.
Okay, thank you. Communications Committee, Jim, Ben?
We have two items that are obviously going to impact us that you should be well aware of. And your packet is the invitation for the 50th anniversary reception that we're hosting here on, on October 15th, our next board meeting, from 3:30 to 5:30 in the afternoon. Past board members have been invited to participate, and they will be recognized when they're here. Lieutenant Governor will be here to tell us how great we are, hopefully. It'll be a nice, nice event. I want to thank Peggy, especially Peggy and Communications, Denise and Ann, for all the hard work and good things they've done. There's a, a number of, there'll be a PowerPoint video kind of thing going on in the background. Our illustrious chair will give words of wisdom and congratulations. And it should be a, a nice little event. You know, it's nice to call attention to the fact that we've been here since 1969. And that's what we're doing. Peggy, anything else on that? Last thing I'll say before Peggy says it, because she would jump in and say it, there's no budget for this. Okay? You know, and, and when I say that, you know, we're going to have a cake and punch and whatever. So, we're asking you for at least a $5 donation to cover the cost of the cake and punch and stuff. And that's one of our responsibilities. You know, you don't have to do anything else. Just give me $5, and I'll take care of it.
We can do that.
We can do that. Okay, I'll keep track. Then, then, in, in, last, well, September 30th, we're going to be headed towards liberal. And I thank you all who can make it. Sorry that some can't make it. But we have two days of, two and a half, Monday afternoon on the 30th, and then all day liberal, and then Garden City and Dayton. It'll be a good trip. You know, I, I can't tell you how excited they are that we're coming to Western Kansas, and to, particularly to those communities. We'll be meeting with teachers, students, going on tours of, of programs, meeting with board members, superintendents, principals, and teachers. It, it's a power-packed time. And it will, it will serve us well, and it will give the Western Kansas folks an opportunity to show off what they're doing. And Gene, thank you very much for helping us organize this and, and smoothing the way. A lot of phone calls and a lot of behind-the-scenes work. So, thank you very much. So, September 30th, we'll see you there in liberal around 5:00. And be sure you've made your reservations, hotel reservations. You know, any other words of wisdom, Peggy?
I'd like to thank everybody that's worked on that also. I know that's been a lot of work, but it will be, it'll really, will be a great event. Anytime we get out, and people are glad to see us, and we always learn so much. So, that'll-
I still hear the benefits of, from folks about our trip to Wichita, and then to Coffville in, in Southeast Kansas last year. So, this is another. And yes, it, it's well appreciated by, by all.
The Chambers especially have been very helpful.
Yep. Well, we appreciate the, and it'll be good to meet with the Chambers in those areas. So, appreciate that. Before we move to the next, and I'm going to have Jim Porter, so you might want to get your PowerPoint ready. I don't know if you've noticed, we have a new person in the back of the room. I'm going to ask you to come up. We've got, and have you introduce yourself, since, from the Board of Regents. They have, they've got somebody that they're coming over to our meetings, and kind of to be a liaison. So, why don't you introduce yourself to board members? They, probably, some of them probably wonder, "Who is that in the back, sitting back there?"
Hi, everyone. Thanks for having me. My name is Erin Wolfram. I'm the new Associate Director of Academic Affairs at the Kansas Board of Regents. And I will be a liaison to the Kansas Department of Education. So, you'll be seeing me at all of these meetings. So, thank you for having me.
Yeah, well, we're glad to have you, and wanted to be sure you introduced yourself to the board. And we look forward to our meeting next week with-
Yes.
-Board of Regents members also.
Absolutely. Yeah, thank you.
So, welcome.
Welcome. Thank you.
Okay, and Jim Porter has even put together a PowerPoint. Would you look at that?
Wow.
Yeah.
Did you do that, Jim, or did Peggy do it?
I did that. Well, if you like it, I did it. If you didn't, Peggy did it. Now, where do, where do I do this to get it?
Yeah, he did it. Sure, he did.
He did.
Yeah. Just, I wanted to, we are, in November, we're going to have a workshop where we actually put together our agenda. And so, for, for the purpose today is just to discuss some of the things that we've discussed that could be on that agenda. And we want to get your feedback. Should this be on the agenda? Should it not be on the agenda for our discussion? We're not making any decisions today. And I've broken it down into two different areas. Those things over which we have direct control, and those things over which we have influence. And then, we need to decide whether or not, as a, as a group. And the purpose of this, Dina and I are in the Capitol Building a lot. And we either have to testify, or we're asked, "What does the board think?" But we've never had the discussion. And so, I can tell them what I think the board thinks. But we thought it would be wise if we actually had the discussion so that we can actually speak for the board, if that is our responsibility to do so. And I think that would be a more powerful message if, if we have agreed on that, and are on record as agreeing for them. And then, if the board also, you know, if there's disagreement, if the board doesn't, you know, if, if my opinion is different from yours, and you say that, then I don't need to be representing, I don't need to be representing that it's the board's decision when it's mine. And so, I think that's, that, that makes our voice stronger if we are making collective thing. Dyslexia. Dyslexia, the, the last meeting of the internal group that is working here in the department to make recommendations to us is going to be September the 30th. It's going to be presented to us next month for action in November, for us to approve or disapprove their recommendations. And so, that will, we will have had that discussion prior to the workshop. So, of course, my prejudice is, since I chaired that committee, is that we support the recommendations of the dyslexia task force. But that's, needs to be part of our discussion. Special education transition has, it's, it's at a stage now where we have actually started drafting the final report. And we have had that report done by a small committee. And now, that drafting group is working. And there's, there's, there's some disagreement there. So, that's, we're going to have to work that out. But that'll get worked out pretty, pretty quickly. But, and then, that group is going to probably meet again in, in the next few weeks with a large group to have recommendations ready. Some of those recommendations are going to be to the Department of Education and the Board of Education. Some of them are going to be to the legislature, because we can't deal with things like underemployment, or sub-minimum wage issues. You know, that's not something we can deal with. But it will require some legislative action. But do we, you know, the question is going to be, do we want to take a position on that? And if we do, what that position is. So, that's the sort of discussions we'll be having there.
Jim, real quick, why don't you explain just briefly, in a nutshell, kind of what special ed transition is? Because I think what you're really talking about is the, pretty much the after-high school.
We're talking, yeah. The federal law requires that there be transition training. And this is transition from school to adulthood, is what that means. At the age of 16, that the IEP conference needs to have a, a process of starting the process of, of planning for transition to adulthood, or post-K-12. The Kansas law is 14. And so, so transition is actually the planning, it, it's, it's very closely related to our individual plans of study. These things are all coming together in a perfect storm at the right time. So, so an individual plan of study to, to help prepare that student to be successful in adult life. So, that's what we're talking about, transition. Computer literacy, is that, is that good enough? Computer literacy comes up every year. I understand there's a group here at the department that's working on that. Do you have any idea what the timeframe is? Will they be able to present to us something? Okay, before?
More than likely.
Okay. Financial literacy always comes up. And so, I think that we need to have a posi, in my position, I'm, give me my opinion, and you can vote it down. I think we need to have a position, you know, I don't think, I don't know that anybody's against students knowing financial literacy. How it's presented is something that probably we need to have a position on.
And Jim, what are the current requirements of financial literacy? I know there are some.
I understand that they are in the standards, and they can be taught that it's a local decision. And there are school districts. For instance, the school district where I retired, probably 10, at least 10 years ago, required is a senior graduation requirement. And other places have done that. There are other schools that embed them in other courses. And, and so, right now, school districts have that, have the authority. They, they don't have the authority not to teach the standards, but they have the authority to do those in various different ways. And, and I think it's important, in my view, it's important for them to ma, maintain that freedom. I, I consider requiring a course for everybody as a 1980 solution to competency-based bullying. The task force is going to be, they're currently addressing these issues. And so, I believe we need to take a position on bullying. My guess is, we need to be against it. And areas where the state board, again, has direct responsibility, there are recommendations that we've already heard, some of them from the Mental Health Advisory Council. You'll have others. And, and we need to know what they are. Areas where we have influence, vaping, you know, we've had a great deal of discussion about that. There are two things about that. There are some areas of which we have direct responsibility. We can, we can make decisions about what can be allowed in a public school. We can't, we can't make, we can't make decisions about how close you can sell it to school, whether or not you can have flavors, that, those sorts of things are, are legislative issues. But we have some, we have some ability to, to make some decisions. And I'm, I'm hoping that the vaping task force will be making some recommendations of this very shortly for us to consider. Steve?
Is it, is it absolutely clear that we do not have the domain or the authority to say you can't sell within 100 yards or 500 yards? Is that clear?
Yes, we do not have that authority.
And that's, that's-
Yes.
-absolute. Okay, thank you.
But we do have the authority to say what can happen whenever you step onto the property.
Sure.
In that handout that we got last month from the, on the stop arm, on the back of the front page, are the legislative requests. And so, I would encourage you to read. Now, it's not in legislative form, but it is what the requests are going to be made. And Jim Carlskent, who is a member of that group, and also a former superintendent, who is a, a member of the House of Representatives, is going to prefile that motion. I think that we need to be very aware of what it is. And, and, and I hope that we can take a position in support of that. Suicide prevention, there's, you know, we talked about this yesterday. I knew about the Attorney General. It appears like there's a half a dozen other places that are dealing with this. And we need to be involved. This is something that, you know, when I ask, I didn't, when I ask other people to make recommendations, this one came up. Human trafficking, evidently, it is, it is a much greater issue than I had known about. But it is something that's, that, that is affecting students. And we need to be, at least consider doing that. The opioid epidemic, the juvenile justice issues, legislative issues, that, there's always issues from the legislature that want to do something different about CACIA. Do we need to take a position? I'm not advocating taking, well, some of these I'm advocating taking positions. Do we need to do that? And this is something that we've never done. The, the legislative lobbyists during the session meet on Thursdays some months, some weeks. They quit meeting last year whenever they got, they had different opinions on whether or not to support the finance bill. Now, in my view, that's when you do meet. When you disagree, that's when you do meet. But, but they quit meeting at that point. But at any rate, I think it's important for us to know what the other organizations, NEA, KSB, USA, any other organizations that you can think of, what their legislative agendas are, and see where- what their legislative agendas are and see where, we're not going to agree with everything, but at least know what they are. So those things that we can work together with other educational organizations, I think that would be a valuable thing for us to know when we make that, when we make, have that discussion. So we can do that in other areas. And this is where I'm asking you, what have we, what have I left out?
Jim?
One area we may, and I'm not saying we need or should, but one area that's going to be, again, popping up and vaping has kind of reinstituted, brought it back to the mainstream is drug testing. And there's districts that are out there and they're, they could use some guidance. And could we, or I don't know if we could make, make that a state rule or if we want to. But it might be an issue we need to discuss. It will be in the legislature this year.
Okay, and at least, and all of these are just things, I'm asking the question, should we? Should we discuss these? And so let's just, can you add that to the list?
Any other things, board members? And if you, I know this, you probably didn't know you were going to be asked this. So if over the, on your drive home, if you think, oh, well, maybe we ought to think about that, just email Jim and Dina and probably Peggy and say, why, what about including this on our topics for discussion? So, I mean, this is not like it's a closed agenda after this meeting. If you think of something else, I think that's certainly appropriate.
This is just a preview of the sort of things that we need to be discussing if we're going to take a stand. And I believe that it's our responsibility to, that Dina and I need guidance when we go across the street. Dina?
Well, I was just going to, to say that if, not only if it's not an area that you think should be considered, if like Jim was saying, it's going to be an issue, let us know that it's going to be an issue so we can talk to you all, find out where you stand, if it's one that could be controversial and we could have different viewpoints. So we're coming with one, one view representing you and not our personal views, so.
And the first question that people asked was, who did the PowerPoint? Peggy and me, I put it together and she fixed it, so that's.
We knew that, thank you.
Madam Chair.
Ann Ma, Ann Ma and Steve. Ann?
Yeah. The only other one I could think of maybe is probably teacher licensure. I'll bet somebody will be back trying to deal with licenses in some way, either what we charge for them or how it's done. So it ought to just be on our list of things we're thinking about. Somebody will come up with something. But I think anytime they try to add more courses to graduation, we should object and go, if you've got an idea, let us know. So adding courses of any kind, no, thank you.
That becomes an unfunded mandate. Steve?
In fact, can we undo some? Maybe we ought to be proactive, getting them off the books.
I'd vote for that.
Steve?
Picking up on what, what Dina said and something Jim alluded to about, you know, speaking with one voice, there will be some issues where we'll have consensus, but we'll also have dissent.
Sure.
So, you know, I want to be clear that when you represent the board and we're unanimous, that's a slam dunk. When we just have a consensus, that's one thing. Being someone who can sometimes vote against the agenda just as easily as drinking orange juice.
I didn't notice that.
I would like, I would like dissent, healthy debate and dissent to be acknowledged. If I could weave that into the conversation. Thank you, sir.
Okay, and as I said, if there's anything else that you think I've just let Jim and Dina and Peggy know, and that discussion will be in November. Okay, thank you. Okay, very good. Okay, all right. I think we'll take a little quick break. So if everybody can kind of be back here as soon as you can, and then we'll finish up the agenda. It shouldn't take too long, maybe 20, 30 minutes. Members, if we could go ahead and come back, we'll finish up with our agenda for today. In your folder, just want to reference a couple of things in there to make sure you know. Our meeting with the Board of Regents next week on September 19th. Peggy has some information in there. It's an agenda and some specific parking information. Anything else on that, Peggy?
I don't think so. The seating arrangements is on your handout too and parking information. And then lunch is available afterwards if you care to stay at their site.
Okay, all right. So those of you that are attending, and I think we know all that information. Yes. And the information also is in your packet about the Western Kansas tour. That agenda is in there also.
Yes.
Addresses and all that for places that we need to go. So thank you on that. Also, the information is in there about the October 15th reception for 50 years of State Board of Education information. So that's in there. You also have your invitation information on the annual conference. That's on October 28th through 30th. And if you haven't let Peggy know, quickly, she said, to let her know those of you are planning on attending.
Might just let you know, we have already been contacted by four school districts about bringing their entire school district.
Wow.
Now, they're small to medium. I mean, they're not Wichita sized, but that's, we haven't had that. So I think there will have good attendance at the annual conference.
Great. Okay, reminder, you have some written individual reports in your folder. So please refer to those and take a look at what some of the things your colleagues have been working on. And Mark, board attorney report for today?
Two items I'd like to cover. The, as you know, the School for the Deaf, the negotiated agreement follows the salary schedule for Olathe School District and it lags behind by one year. The Olathe reached a two-year agreement for 1920 and 2021 that when that then would by statute for successive two years for the, as adopted as the salary schedule for School for the Deaf. The School for the Deaf has indicated to me that the increase that Olathe had was a 4.1% increase. And for fiscal year 2021, that would result in a budgetary increase of $137,004 to their budget when adopted. Also, in year two of that agreement, there's a $1,200 increase in each step or sell of that salary schedule. So just to give you an idea of what, I don't, I don't know the total dollar amount for that second year, but that's, we will most likely not have to do much in terms of any negotiations in the coming two years, given that increase that Olathe has had unless some other issues come up. I try to monitor cases that come out by the Kansas Supreme Court and the Court of Appeals and the Kansas federal courts on a weekly basis. They publish different reports. One caught my attention recently. It's not with a school district, but I just thought it was pretty interesting. By the Kansas Court of Appeals on August 27th, or excuse me, August 23rd, there was a case filed by, I can't pronounce his first name very well, Pantalon Flores III, who is, sued the University of Kansas and various named entities, deans of various schools. And his claims were essentially for what were characterized as educational negligence because he applied for and received a master's degree. He brought a lawsuit later against the, against KU and these deans of the School of Education based on representations made on the website that the curriculum and instruction, quote, coursework fulfills the requirement for the degree and a Kansas initial teaching license. And so those were some representations made on the, on the website. And so he sued the University of Kansas and those deans, saying that that was not accurate. Sometimes these cases get caught up at the preliminary procedural stage. And this was on a motion to dismiss. And the Kansas Court of Appeals reaffirmed that the, an educational malpractice claim, which essentially is a school's failure to provide an effective education, is not a recognized cause of action in Kansas. It's not, so, so once again, educational malpractice, just that it's, you know, the, the, whether, in this case, higher ed, but the student did not receive an effective education is not a cause of action that's recognized. But this individual's case is going to continue under a Kansas consumer protection theory, basically saying that, you know, there was some negligent misrepresentation on a website as to what, you know, what, what the consumer was, was expected to receive by paying the fees. So just thought it was kind of an interesting, there's always somebody testing, you know, a different theory out there and this was very timely. So I'd be happy to entertain any questions about my monthly report or other issues of concern.
Okay, requests for future agenda items, any requests? Steve?
I think at some point, we should review math standards and maybe even think about what it means to differentiate schooling from education. Think about perhaps moving the distinction between primary and secondary earlier to something closer to fourth grade instead of, you know, between sixth and seventh, the way it's traditionally been. But I think the way to get that is going to be tied in with what we heard about today in the standards based, or in the, what do we call it today? What's the initiative in Wichita?
Standards referenced.
Standards referenced. So I think there's a real crisis in kids not learning the basics of, you know, percents, decimals and fractions. I still believe that's very important. Michelle and I were privileged to go to a Blue Valley redesign. Reimagine Blue Valley, USD 229. And they're just, you know, looking for feedback from the, from the public on what they should be thinking about. And one of the things that I found disturbing was, you know, kids don't really have to learn anything anymore. It's process, it's not, you know, remembering things. And for me, that's a big red flag. You do have to remember some things. We actually have to teach a little bit of content when kids are six and seven years old. So I'd like to focus on that. I'd like to make that a future agenda item. Madam Chair, thank you.
Thank you. Ben?
One of the concerns that I've had from several of my districts is how to address the, the solution of Kansas reading roadmap or the restructuring of it within DCF. Working out, our, this might be just a question that Randy could probably beat me in the hallways afterward about. But are we giving support to those schools that have a Kansas reading roadmap because their staff is being let go the end, next week? I've had some superintendents that preparing for the year, then August, they get the news that the support's going away. And so, and I know it's a DCF, it's housed within DCF, which is not, we don't oversee DCF, but it impacts our kids and I have several school districts utilizing that program.
Randy, is that something we could put in a Friday notes? Or is it something you know about, can tell us now, or?
As Ben said, we, that program was, came out of the governor's office, was funded by TANF money with DCF. And while we helped coordinate services in terms of, they linked on to our MTSS system, we never had anything to do with the funding nor the staffing of personnel with it. So I don't know what else I could add to that unless you wanted to. I mean, the money never came through you. We never distributed the money. We never employed anyone to oversee the program. It was Governor Brownback's initiative initially. So I don't know what else we could do with that, Ben. The money was left this year to go, Ben's talking about two schools, but they cut the, the national or state oversight of it. And then my guess is there'll be a conversation at the governor's level about whether that program gets any funding in the future. I don't know.
Ann?
And I have a report in the file, but the hot topic at the redesign committees meeting last week was we've got several ways we do school improvement, MTSS, KLN, we've got redesign, we've got KISA. And at some point in time, we need, they wanted us to talk about, you know, the board members like, well, what was our vision for bringing KISA and redesign together? And I thought, we've never talked about it. So we need to talk about it and, because there was a lot of concern there that KISA is getting more complicated, not less. And that if you're doing redesign, how does that fit with KISA? Does that make sense? So anyway, we need to talk about that sometime.
Put that on the list, very good. Thank you. Okay, thank you. Couple of other things. Oh gosh, this last month, Randy came down to Wichita to the Kansas Leadership Center and presented some information, actually was on a panel, I guess, talking about redesign. And the Kansas Leadership Institute has a nice little magazine. It's called The Journal. And they have two large articles in here. And I was able to get copies of, Jim McNeese was there and Dina was there. So they got copies of this, but I was able to get copies of this. Of course, it absolutely poured rain as soon as the thing was over, so. Yeah, I mean, I, I went, I was a half a block away and I was drenched by the time I got to my car.
Hurricane.
Yeah, it was, it was sideways rain. So I covered my, I covered these booklets up with my jacket, but they have a little bit of water damage. But anyway, there's two very nice articles in here about redesign. One is off the ground, the other one's called Flashpoint. So very nice, more extensive articles than you'd see in the newspaper. So I was able to come up and so Michelle and Steve got one, Ben and Dina, or Jim and Dina have a copy. So I think there's enough for you guys this way. So I brought those and if we need another one, I've got one more. So I just was able to get enough of those copies. From several of you, last month, I mentioned the School Mental Health Advisory Council. I were kind of getting some new members on you. Several of you have given me some recommendations for potential people to put on that. What we're going to do is look at that list and see where do they fit as far as where some of our vacancies are. So some information coming on that. Just a reminder, this is Kansas Teacher Year, Teacher of the Year Regional Banquet Weekend. So we've got lots of opportunities. We've got the, I think it, midday on Saturday is Salina and the evening is Wichita. And then I believe it's midday on Sunday is Topeka and the evening is Overland Park. Do I have those? So I know many of you will be on the banquet circuit this weekend. I will be in Wichita, so we'll look forward to seeing folks there also. The, oh, the banquet in Salina and Overland Park are in different venues because there's more folks. So what a great thing. Randy, some of your conversation encouraging more people to nominate is having an impact. So really appreciate that. We're always glad to see teachers get recognized. Our next meeting on October 15th and 16th is actually a week later than usual, so remember that. The agenda will include the commissioner's annual report. We will be getting, as Jim said, the dyslexia task force recommendations are due to us. And then we do have that 50th anniversary reception. So that information is coming up. Okay, I do believe we need to go to travel now. So if you take a look at travel, it is in your packet. And do we have any additions or changes, Janet? Janet?
I'm gonna try to come to that conference on Tuesday, KST Conference. Yes, just the one day, I've got things for the following day, so.
Anybody else? Jim?
I'm gonna try to go to the early childhood things on the 7th and 8th, uh, but I, but I'll let you know for sure, uh, I might need to prove it. And, uh, the Council of Superintendents in Pittsburgh on the, uh, on the 9th.
Anything else, Dan? This way? Ben?
Yeah.
Mally Jolie.
Um, I'm removing the, attending the Arts Education Alliance.
Okay. Anything else on this end? Okay, down here. Steve?
Um, I'm gonna go ahead and go to Liberal in Garden City, and I'll make my own arrangements for hotel.
Anybody else? Have a motion to approve travel. Michelle? Second? Ben? All in favor, please raise your hand. That looks like a 10-0. Okay, well, I know I, we got out early yesterday and I failed miserably today, so I guess that evens out. Okay, thanks, everybody, and we'll be seeing you, a lot of you, next week again, so, thank you.